Alrighty folks, good evening, good afternoon. We're gonna go ahead and call our school board meeting to session. Welcome everyone, great seeing you all. So now we're gonna move on to 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance. And we're gonna be led today by our recently crowned, on September 23rd, our Mr. and Mrs. Cardinal Alejandro Davalos and Danielle Francesca Villanueva. So welcome. And he definitely has that wave down, alright. So let's all please stand.
Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Alrighty, well done Alejandro, well done. We have a lot of folks running around here, so I'm just making sure. On to 1.3, approval of the agenda.
I'm moved.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Chahusky. Any items to be pulled, or amended, or discussed? Okay, I do have one. And it will be an addition here, under 4.1. Pursuant to a request under Government Code Section 54957, by the employee involved when the closed session matters under public employee discipline dismissal release, will be heard in open session as item number 4.1, instead of closed session. The general public comment on closed session items currently reflected on tonight's agenda as item 4.1, will be red designated as item 4.2. The closed session agenda will be red designated as item 4.3. The board will hear the recommendation on the item 4.1, and then after any public comment on other closed session items, will adjourn to closed session for deliberation and vote.
A question for you?
Yes sir, Vice President Tillman.
So after we hear the item, we're gonna adjourn to closed session?
Yes sir.
And then we'll come out and take action on that item?
Yes sir. And there will be no discussion of the board after the comment from the individual, if the individual makes one? It'll be in closed session.
In public.
Yes sir, it'll be in closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Alright, if there are no other comments, amendments, or discussion, we'll go ahead and vote on the amended agenda, thank you. And we'll start with our student board members. Alrighty, so be ready, Antonio. Mister?
Aye.
Alright, I should say Mister Hernandez Nunez. Ms. Rojo.
Aye.
Alright, Ms. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Outstanding. The rest of us will go ahead and vote electronically, and I do wanna say that Ms. Sabios is ill and excuse denied as well.
Dr. Wyatt.
Didn't come up my mind, but I'll go verbal with an aye. Okay, motion carries, we'll move on to 2.0, special presentations and recognitions. 2.1 is our Davaya Mariachi and Ballet Folklorico student performances, but they were actually given the wrong time, so they will be here a little bit later. So we'll move them down into the agenda, probably around the closed session comment time is when I believe they will be here. This will take us on to 2.2, which is our Making Hope Foundation Board of Directors. And at this time, I'll be introducing our board of directors, and there's quite a few of you here today as I can see, so welcome this evening. And I will go with our, start with our chairman of the board, Mister Michael Rivera, welcome. Alright, we'll go ahead and give him a round applause, and we're all set, done with it, how's that? Or we could go one at a time. Alright, Mary Ann Johnson, Board Treasurer, is here, welcome. Carrie Gilbreth, a board member, welcome. Joelyna Greider, Board Secretary, good evening, welcome. Hattie, why you go by Hattie Garcia, welcome Hattie. So good to see you. You know, I don't go, I don't call him that, but that's what he puts on here. So Kathy Knowles, a board member, welcome. And Mister Garcia, I will acknowledge you are immediate past chair, so thank you for that. Garzon Cecena, did I get that right, I hope? He's not here? Okay, well, welcome to our operations manager, I know he's not here, but we wanna make sure to acknowledge him. Karen Suarez, Vice President of Collective Impact, welcome. We know that's a big one right there, the collective impact and the countywide vision. Aaron Bringer, Vice President of Development, welcome Aaron, good to see you. And Nikki Detman, our Chief Executive Officer, welcome Mister Detman. We'll get you up here in just a little bit, but I also have a couple other names that I gotta introduce, some special guests today, that should be either here out in the crowd, or coming in any second. And that will be Bunzri Parik. And we also have Kathy Paredes. They are both from the Inland Empire President for Bank of America, and Inland Empire Market Executive for Bank of America. Welcome both, good evening, and welcome to the microphone. Let's welcome our folks from B of A.
There we go.
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you to San Bernardino City Unified School District Superintendent Mauricio Arellano, and President Dr. Scott Wyatt, and the board members for allowing me to address you tonight. My name is Bunzri Parik, and I serve as the Inland Empire President for Bank of America. You did really well, Dr. Wyatt, that was good.
They put it phonetically, so I can't take credit for that, but I'm glad, thank you.
And I lead Bank of America's efforts here locally to help make financial lives better. So one of the key ways we do that is we support our community through a signature philanthropic program called the Neighborhood Builders. We created the Neighborhood Builders in 2004 to strengthen the network of nonprofit leadership, because we know how critical that is to helping our local communities thrive. Through it, we are helping advance issues fundamental to economic mobility in our community as part of our approach to responsible growth. Our Neighborhood Builders are strong nonprofits addressing important issues in our community. So each year, we select two Neighborhood Builders in the Inland Empire. Each nonprofit receives $200,000 in flexible funding, strategic leadership development for the executive director, and an emerging leader, and a nonprofit peer network that will be even more meaningful this year as nonprofits provide services to those most in need in our community. With the Inland Empire consisting of 52 cities and two counties, and almost 5 million people, selecting two is a really hard job. But this year, we are so very excited to announce one of our Neighborhood Builders, Making Hope Happen, as a 2023 Neighborhood Builder. Almost done, and then we're gonna call them up. So Making Hope Happen receives this award because of their foundational support of San Bernardino, their collaboration in this community, and their innovative approach to leadership in helping improve San Bernardino and the mighty Inland Empire. So congratulations to Making Hope Happen, Nikki Detman, Karen Suarez, staff and board, come on up so we can celebrate you.
And Ms. Parik, did we, did we have a dollar figure on there? I don't think I heard a dollar figure. So I'd like you to announce that dollar figure, please.
$200,000 in flexible funding to Making Hope Happen Foundation.
Well, board, I think we'll be coming down with our Making Hope Happen Board, as well as our Bank of America special guests. And board, we'd like for you to come down, and we'll take some pictures as well. And then student board members, we'd like you to come down as well, too, so let's all head down. Alright, photo op, photo op, you guys are all good. Saturday, right? That's the plan, that's the plan to drop by. Come and close your jacket. There you go.
We'll let the lovely people take their photos first?
And then the professional.
If I can, just really, quick. Wow, I, um... I'm just amazed. When we were asked to attend the board meeting about a week or so ago, I thought, wow, Mauricio really likes us, and he's returning the favor, cuz we invited him to our board meeting. So he must've really liked us. And, uh, to... I stand before you as a proud product of San Marino City Unified School District. It is my greatest honor to serve as the CEO of this foundation. And we aren't able to do the work that we do without the support of community partners like Bank of America. I came here tonight to share with the board about the partnership that we have with you through our KITS program and the enrollment program. And we shared this with Mauricio. Last fiscal year, for your $250,000 investment in the KITS program, which is our zero to five literacy program, the district received over $800,000 in return benefit. And I think that's a pretty doggone good return on investment, better than the stock market. And so, I can only imagine the great things that we will be able to do for San Bernardino students, for San Marino residents, for our community at large, with this very generous donation from Bank of America. So again, thank you Bank of America, thank you school board, thank you cabinet, you have always been so supportive of the work that we do. I am so grateful to be a part of this community, and I look forward to continuing a long partnership with everyone, thank you.
Are we on? There we go. Well, thank you very much, congratulations. Now, I'd like to bring your attention to another recognition. It is the Golden Quill Award. So thank you, Dr. Wyatt, thank you board and executive cabinet. My name is Mary Rhone Goodwin. I am the Director of Communications and Community Relations. Tonight, we are honored to recognize the recipient of the California School Boards Association 2023 Golden Quill Award. Each year, the CSBA selects individuals for this prestigious award in recognition of their fair, insightful, and accurate reporting on public school news by print, broadcast, and online news media representatives. This year, Mister Clifton Harris, retired law enforcement officer, investigative reporter, and producer of the San Bernardino American newspaper, is one of four individuals at the state of California to be selected for this year's Golden Quill Award. Mister Harris, would you please make your way forward? Mister Harris, the San Bernardino City Unified School District thanks you for your contributions to educational journalism. Your support and understanding of the opportunities and challenges facing public school systems plays a critical role in helping our community stay informed about important topics, and highlights the San Bernardino American newspaper as a valuable source and resource in our community. When you consider that this is one of the oldest adjudicated, locally owned, minority newspapers serving the Inland Empire, we wanna thank you for your contributions once again. For those of you who are not familiar, this is his publication. You will find a lot of our press releases included, and that doesn't always happen. So we wanna thank you for taking the time to publish the good news. You were part of our good news crew, so we appreciate that. At this time, I'd also like to introduce Mario Flores, who is representing Supervisor Joe Baca Junior's office. And he has a presentation. Dr. Wyatt, come to the side of, there you go. There we go. I got, I got it. You wanna go ahead and look my way quick? One, two, three. And then I grab a lot for safe students, and you're all... On behalf of, one more time, sorry. So on behalf of San Bernardino City Unified, the CSBA, I present you this award. Thank you very much. So we'll have our board continue to stand. We're still not finished with presentations. Yes sir. So we're excited to be able to highlight the quality programs that we have in this district. One of the programs that we are extremely excited to be able to offer at every elementary, middle, and high school in the morning and the afternoon is our Expanded Learning Program. Today, we'd like to provide recognition for one of our newest sports to the Inland Empire, and actually to CIF sports. I'd like to be able to acknowledge the Cajon Girls First Flag Football Team. And at this time, I would like to recognize our vendor from Athletes for Life, Greg Bell, if you could come up. And I would also like to bring up our leaders from our Expanded Learning Program, Ms. Anne Pearson, Laura Vega, Tiffany Arena, and Mister Robert Ruff, and Sandy Mancha. Now, our young ladies are scholar athletes, and so today, they are on an Avid field trip. And so they're visiting a college today, so they're unable to be with us tonight. But we would like to be able to present the EXL team with their championship trophy. And so at this time, I will hand it over to Greg Bell to talk a little bit about the program, as well as the highlights from the season.
Thank you. First, giving honor to God, and thanks to the board here of San Bernardino Unified School District. And then, I've gotta turn to the EXL team with the foresight to understand how important sports are in our community, as well as it is in society. One of the great things I think you'll learn from sports is that 90% of college athletes that are graduating on time are athletes. That's something that the NC2A loves broadcasting, and I'm happy to see that our girls are out, even though they're not here, they're at Avid, looking at the colleges, that they're gonna probably earn some scholarships, too, because tomorrow night, I guess, the I Am Gifted Award for one of the players is a female athlete, flag football player at Indian Valley. So it's actually kicking over into CIF. I have to thank Anne Pearson, Tiffany, Laura. Those are the two that I've worked with, and I'm just starting to work with Sean in the back for coming to me and giving me the opportunity to serve the city as we've continued to serve for the last 20 some odd years. And I can't thank them enough, and can't thank the board enough. And of course, Dr. Rodriguez, you know, we kept pushing dates and making it, but we're gonna have a great program that the girls next year are gonna, they're really looking forward to it, they really are.
We're really excited, because we were one of the first districts that actually was able to kick off an all-girls flag football team. So really proud to be a leader in athletics. So at this time, we'll go ahead and present the award to our EXL team in front of our board. And then we also have a special presentation from Mario Flores, from Joe Baca's office, who will also be presenting a certificate to the team. So as I'm stalling as they're taking the picture, I wanna acknowledge Greg Bell, who is the owner and founder of our Athletes for Life program, who is a former Raider and Rams player, who continues that love of football and athletics, and really that well-rounded student to the students of San Bernardino. His program has grown, and now is offered at all of our high schools. And in addition to that, he has partnered with one of our alums from San Bernardino High School, Alexander Madison. And this year, we're starting an I Am Gifted Weekly Athlete of the Week, Boy and Girl from the Inland Empire. And we're really excited that the podcast is coming out, and just to give recognition to the hard-working students in San Bernardino. And they're taking the picture. I'd also like to take some time to acknowledge the work of our EXL team. The program is offered again at every school in the district, in the morning and afternoon. So we're able to provide quality programs, students can do their homework. Students are able to take advantage of lots of opportunities, from Lego club, rocketry, cooking classes, as well as doing their homework. We're encouraging students to be able to have that well-rounded, whole-child approach, and to give students opportunities that students in maybe more affluent districts or communities have. So one of the signature events that will be coming up in next week, on the 14th, is our Brick Blast. It's already sold out, or else we would be telling you more about that program. But we're really excited that we're able to bring the magic of Legos to San Bernardino City Schools.
Alrighty folks, we'll go ahead and continue. We're gonna go to 2.5, Resolution and Recognition of California Week of the School Administrator, and it is Ms. Chahusky.
Whereas leadership matters for California's public education system and the close to 6 million students it serves. And whereas the title of school administrator is used to define many educational leadership posts, such as superintendent, principal, assistant principal, special education and adult education leader, district business official, classified educational leader, and other school district employees who are considered administrators. And whereas providing quality service for student success is paramount, and the future of California's public education system depends upon the quality of its leadership. And whereas school leaders depend on a network of support from fellow administrators, teachers, parents, students, businesses, community members, board trustees, colleges and... parents, students, businesses, community members, board trustees, colleges and universities, community and faith-based organizations, and elected officials to promote ongoing student achievement and school success. And whereas the state of California has declared in Education 44015.1, the second full week of October as the week of the School Administrator, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District declares October 8 through the 14th, 2023, as the week of the School Administrator, and commends all school leaders for the contributions they make to successful student achievement. So moved.
Second.
Second.
All righty, it was moved by Ms. Chahusky, second by Vice President Tillman. Looks like we have a light on, Ms. Alexander? No? Okay, we do not? All right, well, if there's no other discussion, let's go ahead and vote. Oh, and I apologize. Mr. Hernandez Nunez?
Aye.
All right, Ms. Rojo?
Aye.
Ms. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
All right, rest of us will vote electronically. Ms. Cunningham, mine is not coming up, just so you know. I don't even think my agenda's the right one, but it's not coming up on my screen. So I... Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 2.6 Resolution and Recognition of National Red Ribbon Week. And I don't have names on mine, folks, so I'm going to move on over to the... Oh, it's Antonio. Does it say it up there? That's even better. I can't see that far, so you guys are going to help me out, so. Mr. Hernandez Nunez, it looks like you get Red Ribbon Week, so very good. Thank you.
Whereas according to data collected in 2020, half of Americans aged 12 and older have used illicit drugs in their lifetime. And whereas teenagers and people with mental health issues are more at risk for drug use and addiction, with more than 46% of teenagers having tried an illicit drug by the time they are in 12th grade. And whereas although public awareness of illicit drug use is increasing, emerging drug threats such as the abuse of prescription medication, use of inhalants, and opioids such as fentanyl demand attention. And whereas government, parents, law enforcement, schools, service organizations, and youth can provide positive peer influence by demonstrating a commitment to maintaining healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during Red Ribbon Week. And whereas the theme of Red Ribbon Week 2023 is be kind to your mind, live drug-free. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby proclaims October 23rd through 31st, 2023, as Red Ribbon Week, encourages all schools to participate in drug prevention activities during Red Ribbon Week and throughout this year, making a visible statement that SBCUSD is strongly committed to a drug-free community.
So moved. Second.
All right, it's moved by Ms. Chahusky, second by Ms. Rosales Medina. We'll go ahead to our student board members, Mr. Hernandez Nunez.
Aye.
Ms. Rojo?
Aye.
Ms. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Rest will vote electronically. Thank you. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 2.7 Resolution to Participate in the 2023 Great California Shakeout Earthquake Drill, and that will be Ms. Mary Ellen Grande.
Give Scott. Whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District recognizes that no community is immune from natural or man-made hazards and recognizes the importance of training staff and students to withstand these hazards. And whereas the district knows the importance of reducing human impact, property damage, interruption of educational services, and economic loss caused by those hazards. And whereas the district has a responsibility to promote earthquake preparedness with the staff, students, and families it serves, and plan appropriately for earthquake-related disasters. And whereas proper training of district employees will allow them to facilitate the continuity of operations and assist our community following a major earthquake. And whereas by participating in the Great California Shakeout Earthquake Drill on Thursday, October 19th, 2023, at 10:19 a.m., the district has the opportunity to join millions of Californians in testing emergency response procedures. And whereas the district encourages schools and families to participate in the Great California Shakeout at their schools, work sites, and homes, and to use the information available at both www.shakeout.org/California and www.sbcusd.com/ready/sbcusd to educate and prepare themselves to protect life and property during an emergency. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District directs district-wide participation in the Great California Shakeout Drill on October 19th, 2023, at 10:19 a.m.
So moved.
Second. It's moved by Ms. Alexander, second by Vice President Tillman. Any discussion? All right, here and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Mr. Hernandez Nunez?
Aye.
Ms. Rojo?
Aye.
Ms. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
I am aye as well. Rest of us will vote electronically. Thank you. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 3.0 Public Comments, 3.1 Receive Public Comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And our first public speaker and comment will be Ms. Kristen McGuire. Welcome, Ms. McGuire.
Hello. Okay. Good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, and other members of the board and the administrators. My name is Kristen McGuire, and I am speaking on behalf of Wena Krichlow, the president of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated Pomona Valley Alumni Chapter. Our service areas include the greater Pomona Valley as well as areas of the Inland Empire. Today, we are here to acknowledge one of our members and a member of your Board of Trustees, Felicia Alexander. Sora Alexander joined our sisterhood in 1988 at Kappa Omega Chapter at UC Santa Barbara. She's been an active and hard-working member ever since. We're here today to describe who we are, introduce ourselves, and hope that we can establish a relationship moving forward. Delta Sigma Theta's dedication to education is not merely a gesture, it's a testament to our belief in the transformative power of knowledge. Through various initiatives, mentorship programs, and scholarships, we have consistently championed the cause of education, ensuring that every child, regardless of their background, has access to quality learning opportunities. By supporting these educational initiatives, we actively contribute to narrowing the achievement gap and fostering a culture of inclusivity in our schools. Moreover, Delta Sigma Theta serves as a beacon of inspiration for students. Our members, often successful professionals and community leaders, such as Felicia Alexander and the late Dr. Margaret Hill, whose name emblazes this very room, serve as role models who demonstrate the importance of education, hard work, and resilience. These positive influences are crucial in shaping the attitudes and aspirations of our young learners, encouraging them to dream big and strive for excellence in their academic pursuits. Pomona Valley Alumni Chapter has youth programs and scholarships that your students are available for, that are available to your students. We will email more information to you about them and ask that you share them broadly. Together, let's continue to invest in the future of our children, ensuring that they receive the best educational and possible information and are equipped with the knowledge and skills that they need to succeed in life. Again, we want to thank you for your time. We look forward to your partnership. And Sora Alexander, thank you for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire. Appreciate that. All right, our next public speaker and public comment is Councilman Alexander. Welcome, Mr. Alexander. I see you're matching in red as well, sir. Very good. You got the dress code from the missus, I see.
Well, I'm a member of Omega Psi Phi Sorority Incorporated, and that is my sister sorority, so you know, we have to do what we're told. But I'm not here, I'm here as Damon Alexander, and I'm calling on about the San Bernardino Turkey Trot, which you guys all know happens on November 23rd on Thanksgiving Day. So we would like to invite everyone out to the San Bernardino Turkey Trot. It's our ninth year. We have been a partner with the San Bernardino Unified School District. We have provided a discount to all students that participate in the Turkey Trot every year that it's been in existence. It starts at 7:00 a.m. in the morning on Thanksgiving, so we have a saying, wobble before you gobble. So get down there. It's at the San Bernardino International Airport. We're the only race that runs inside the airport. The first time we ran it, two years inside the airport, guess what? I managed to get a plane to fly over to all the runners. No, I didn't. But, no, I didn't. I didn't manage that. But you can come, you can pick up your race bib the day before. You guys have five minutes for your public comment, don't you? Wow, I'll be here a minute. No. It's a fun race, it's a family race. We have a family tradition that families come out and they dress up as turkeys, pilgrims. They come out, they come out every year. And so it's definitely a family tradition. It's about health and wellness. You come out and you get your steps on. You do not have to run. You can wobble. You do not have to do that. As long as you finish, there's a finishing medal, and it's just a good time before you start your Thanksgiving morning and feast with your family. So I just wanted to come out, it's at sbturkeytrot.com. That's sbturkeytrot.com. And like I said, anybody in the school district that signs up has a discount, as always, every year. So thank you for your time. Hope to see you on Race Day, because I'm the co-race director, and you know who the other co-race director is. So thank again for allowing me to speak about the San Bernardino Turkey Trot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Alexander. Hopefully, we get a lot of folks out there for you. I know I need it more than anyone. I'll definitely be wobbling too, sir. All right, our next public speaker is Annette Billups. Welcome, Ms. Billups. All right, and we see we have our wonderful guest, SBTA, up there. Welcome, everyone. Good to see you.
All right. Good evening, Superintendent, Cabinet and Board Members. My name is Annette Billups. I'm a teacher at Cajon High School, and I'm here about two safety concerns. I'm on the Safety Council at school, but our hands are tied with these two issues, so hopefully you can help with them. One is the lack of safe perimeter. So Cajon is wide open. The only truly secured area is in front of the school. The rest of the perimeter is varying heights of chain link that even I could hike over if I really wanted to. So and I always think about that, if I could hike over it, definitely somebody who shouldn't be in the school could easily do it. And another issue along with that is considering the larger population of high schools should have a larger number of CSOs. We only have five for 3,000 students, and they are stretched very thin on the daily. And then my second item is Narcan distribution. So earlier in the summer, the health nurses and I think the CSOs, they were trained on how to use Narcan. And I had emailed Mr. Vatier asking, you know, I'd really like that as well, because I'd like it in my classroom. But I guess it was a slow rollout. And so my request is to have Narcan made available in every building at high schools and middle schools, so not just a few people. I pulled some data from the CDC. Fentanyl overdose death rates have more than tripled from 2016 to 2021, and that was published in May of this year. And one of my concerns is by the time someone runs to whoever has the Narcan, explains what's happening, then waits for them to get it, then runs back to where the student is, it's going to be too late. We had an incident happen at Cajon where a student was having a problem. And all I could do, granted, I had a classroom full of students, and this happened when the bell rang, but all I could do was stand there and watch. I didn't have Narcan, if that was what was required. And I literally felt sick to my stomach the entire rest of the day into the night. It was an awful feeling. I mean, granted, I guess because I'm a medical, I come from the medical side of things, I like to be able to run and help, but I had nothing that could have helped in that situation. So a possible solution for that, again, is every building at the school should have a lead person with Narcan available, perhaps a walkie as well for communication. And that was everything that I wanted to hopefully have you guys be able to help with. I appreciate it. All right? Thank you.
All righty, Ms. Billups, thank you. All right, our next public speaker and comment, looks like an entire group of folks, and it will be our Public Safety Academy, also known as PSA. Welcome, everyone.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Stickle, and I'm the principal at Public Safety Academy Charter School. And we are, our focus is law enforcement, careers in firefighting, military, emergency medical response. And we are here to showcase PSA a little bit, and also, more importantly, to thank the San Bernardino City Unified Board of Directors just for all your years of support. We've always had a really wonderful partnership, and we're very grateful for that partnership. We're very pleased to be a part of the San Bernardino City Unified Community. So with that, we just wanted to show you a little bit about what Public Safety Academy Charter School is all about. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Cadet Rodriguez. All right, thank you, cadets. You can stay there just for one moment. Last thing I wanted to say is just please feel free to come visit Public Safety Academy anytime. All of the board members are welcome. We'd love to see you. I know you're extremely busy, but anytime you want to swing by, you are more than welcome. And we also have some swag, some PSA swag for the board members. So if I could have my cadets now come help me pass that out, and thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, everyone. Job well done, young men and young ladies, so great job. All right, our next public speaker and comment will be Maisha Lee. All right, our next public speaker and comment will be Maisha Lee. Welcome, Ms. Lee. Actually, we're almost ready for you guys. Thank you very much. But Ms. Lee, come on up, Ms. Lee. It's your turn right now. Thank you. And thank you, students. We'll get right to you in a bit.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right, my name is Maisha Lee, and I have come here to talk about the traffic and the safety at Barton Elementary School. I work over there as a crossing guard, and the traffic over there is really bad. They're driving like 45 to, man, you don't even know, 80 miles an hour over there. I'm walking the kids across the street. They're about to run us over. They don't care. And I think that something needs to be done. It's apartment building that's right across the street. It has an entry and an exit. And the school has an entry and an exit, but it also have another entrance and exit down at the end. I think that they should close the one near the crosswalk. I think it should be speed bumps. I think it should be people out there with bells and whistles and everything else to make these cars slow down or, I don't know, something needs to be done. The kids can't speak, so I'm speaking for them. I have parents who have signed, I have two papers of signatures and numbers of parents that are concerned. They are at work right now, so I'm paying to hear. But we scared, I'm scared. I don't want to quit my job in this economy. I love kids, but at the same time, I don't want to be ran over. I don't want them to be ran over. So, I'm asking for you guys' help. If you can ask the school if they could close the exit by the crosswalk or put a speed bump or school police. You know, our bus drivers, they can't even park where they're supposed to because all of the cars are parking right there. So, it holds up the traffic, and it makes it really impossible for me to do my job because I can't see. It's just a lot. I'm sorry. I never spoke publicly before. It's kind of making me nervous. But yes, that's what I like to happen. Thank you.
And we have a couple of questions, it looks like, from the board, so if we can ask you a couple and Vice President Tillman, yep.
I want to thank you for coming out and did a good job expressing yourself. And I'm sure that the superintendent will make sure that we get chief and maybe Vatir out there. And I'll also come by and take a look. But I appreciate you coming out and telling us about your concerns. I agree, we got to make sure it's safe, and we'll find a way to do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Rosales Medina.
Thank you as well.
These are lights, that means you're getting real popular up here.
Yes, no, thank you so much for coming forward as well. And so, I did want to clarify, what was the school site again, the name?
It was Barton Elementary.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina and Ms. Chahuski.
I also thank you for coming out. I was there for the Safe Routes to School Walk that we had there a little while ago, so I'm aware of what you're speaking. I can visualize what you're talking about. So, I appreciate that this will go to the superintendent.
Okay, so you know about the apartment building and where the...
We did that Safe Routes Walk there a couple of weeks ago. So, thank you for coming out and bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chahuski. And Ms. Lee, same thing for me. You know, this has been, I know, on our agenda, I know Ms. Rosales Medina and myself, since I've probably been on the board, and we're talking about eight years now. And the streets around many of our schools are not safe. And I'd ask our public out there, our community, to consider that when you are driving around our schools and our town everywhere, to take your time. You know, bide along, watch those stop signs and crosswalks. I mean, you know, our kids are our most precious resource. And I know we're all in a hurry when we drop off our kids. I was one of those parents too when I dropped off my kids and had to get to work and then drop off my other kid, so there's two of them in the morning. But we still need to take our time and be safe. So, thank you, Ms. Lee, again, for your time.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Anybody else?
All right, our next public comment is Ms. Barbara Pastechek Cox. I see that at the end there. Miss, welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Superintendent Ariano, school board and cabinet members. My name is Barbara Pastechek Cox, and I'm the Vice President for the San Bernardino Teachers Association. And I wanted to thank you all for, you know, taking time to say hello to our members as they stop by at our welcome table and the foyer. So, we plan to be here every school board meeting with teachers from various sites. And we're continuing to encourage our members to participate and become more knowledgeable about the procedures and the decision-making processes of the district. And tonight, I would like to acknowledge and thank members from Elementary Music, Salinas, Cajon, Hillside, San Andreas and Cypress. Thank you so much for your time and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Pastechek. All right, our next public speaker is, and I apologize if we got the last name wrong, looks like Ms. Velma Cooley, welcome. Good evening. Oh, there you are. Did I get that right or is that wrong? Oh, okay, thank you very much. Well, good evening and welcome.
Hello, board members. My name is Velma Cooley, and I'm just here as a concerned parent. I have a kid on site at Barton Elementary, and he's albino, and he's different. He looks different from everyone else, and he's been bullied. This isn't the first year. This is going on the second year. I've been asking for assistance through the school principal, through the assistant principal, the regular principal. I have gotten no help. I've reached out to the school board, put in bullying requests. I did screenings and all of that. Still, nothing. Just this recent incident that happened last week. I had someone call him a white MFB. And this is coming home and it's tormenting him. He's crying that he doesn't want to go to school. What I want to get done, I want them to be aware of bullying. I need them to get more parents involved. Speak with your kids at home. Not everyone look the same, act the same, because it's taking a toll on him. It's taking a toll on him, and it's taking effect on our home as well. And I don't think that that's fair. I, we need some solutions. If that mean that we have to do bullying ceremonies or like have someone come and speak out to them on it, we have to do something about it. We have to do something about it. And that's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Looks like we have a light here for you as well, and that's Ms. Rosales Medina.
Again, thank you so much for coming down. I wanted to ask you, have you reached out to the school site? And has there been any type of result from that?
No, as far as results, they said that they will go to the next step, and they will send out the, I guess, the undercovers to go in to see the problem, what's going on and stuff. But that's as far as we got in.
All righty, any others? Vice President Tillman?
I just want to say, because, you know, the, I don't want to generalize so we can't say a lot, but I want you to make sure you know that we heard you. I know you said you reached out to the board. I didn't receive anything, but I can guarantee that we'll follow up. I know the superintendent and Dr. Rodriguez will follow up. And if not, let me give you my cellphone number.
Okay.
909, you got something?
Yes. 909?
Yeah, 909-800-0318. Just keep me updated. And if we're not getting the results, make sure you reach out to me, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Marion Grande?
I just had a question. Thank you for coming also. Did you mention about how long this has been going on and has it been at the same school?
Yes, it's been at the same school. This is going on the second year. So, all his first grade year, all last year, and this upcoming school year, it started already.
Well, we're listening to you, all right?
Thank you so much. Because, because his principal, what I give back is that they're young and they don't know what they're saying. So, I feel like she's just dismissive of his feelings and stuff.
I apologize on that.
Thank you.
I apologize.
All right, thank you, Ms. Grande.
Thank you, you guys have a good evening.
One more, Ms. Chahuski.
I just want to clarify, as you said at the end, and it was going to be one of my questions, has the undercover anti-bullying team been to the site to meet with him yet?
They haven't been to the site. That was the last, the last time I spoke to them, they said that that was the, what they was going to go through with.
So, they did the bully screening, but the undercover team has not been there?
No.
Okay. Please let us know when, either through Mr. Tillman or whatever, when they, then they come. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you again. All righty, we have any others? Oh, got a few more left. Okay, our next public comment. And this looks like it's, and I apologize if we get it wrong, Jania or Jania Mack? Ms. Jania Mack? Jania? Ms. Mack? All righty, if you're here, maybe in the restroom, come back around. We'll call you back up. Moving on to the next public comment. All right, this is Joe Salas. Welcome, Joe. I know, I saw you just come in the door. You're on your computer. All right, head on down here. Evening, sir.
Good evening, trusted mentors, and I love we have our student trustees now. Thank you for trustee Chahuski and Dr. Rodriguez for getting those in friends. I just want to, as a teacher, I'm really coming as a community member. I live in San Bernardino, and I'm also a commissioner for the City of San Bernardino on Parks Recreation. And right now, you're getting, I hope I printed enough flyers. Everyone right now is getting a flyer to the farmer's market that's being sponsored by the City of San Bernardino Parks Recreation. It's going to be happening on Tuesday in two weeks, starting from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's going to be, this is like a two-year-long vision that I've had with the city to try to find somewhere where we can have this. First, it was going to be on East Street up in San Bernardino High School. There's a big bus that goes on there every day, so we couldn't have it there like a street fair. But finally, it's going to be down in Court Street, right next to the city hall. I encourage you all to come in two weeks, on two Tuesdays from now. And you can grab your fresh produce. They have, if you want to see what it looks like, go to Clermont on a Sunday. And that's the one that Oscar Deleon, the proprietor of that one, or the one that's in Moreno Valley, or at the county building in the community of Riverside. They, he's the proprietor of all those. His proprietors have like organic everything that you can think of. He even has like wild bee sage honey from farmers in Beaumont. So, everything's locally grown. This will be a great opportunity for people who have their own farms, community members to sell down there. And we really look forward to, this is, we couldn't get it on the weekends because he is in those other locations on there. So, again, it's going to be 8:00 to 1:00 p.m. on Tuesday, starting October 17th. And Oscar is also going to do things where people, all income levels can participate. He's going to be accepting EBT and WIC. So, it'd be great to see through family engagement and through our great community development, community engagement department, to try to get this out to our families. And I look forward to seeing you all there. And please, in your houses of worship, in your circles of influence, try to get as many people there from the community because this one's not, this one's not going anywhere. It's not the one that was at Peyton Park a couple of years ago. The city's sponsoring this one. So, we look forward to seeing you down there. And it's also a great time for, maybe if you're a social studies teacher and you're a fellow teacher, maybe you can go down there on a walking tour and check out all the local areas of government that we have there. It can be a walking engagement in your community and go see what they're doing at city hall, county office, and it's a great way for residents to reintroduce themselves to the downtown San Bernardino. We have some amazing businesses down there. I don't know if you've, we have a boba place, we have, there's a yoga place in downtown San Bernardino. I had no idea. And so, this will be hopefully one of those business aggregators that gets people re-engaged in our downtown and make it, once again, this is probably when Mickey and the superintendent were living in the community and maybe Danny and anyone else who might have been here during the 60s, 70s and 80s and 90s to really re-engage downtown and make it the once-vital place that it was be. It's going to be, it still is, and it's going to continue to grow. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salas. Appreciate you as well. All righty, our next comment is actually a virtual comment, and it looks like it is Caitlin Shin. Welcome, Ms. Caitlin Shin, if you are there.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, everybody. My name is Caitlin Shin, and I'm a current second-year medical student at California University of Science and Medicine in Fulton. Thank you for having me today. I wanted to inform all teachers, staff, families and students in the San Bernardino Unified School District of an initiative aimed to provide free online tutoring services to students who are unable to attend school, whether it's due to continuous hospitalization, illness, or like healthcare, frequent healthcare appointments. Sprout Volunteer Tutoring is a current registered organization with our medical school that seeks to mitigate the expensive costs of education for families by connecting medical student tutors to K-12 students in basic course subjects for free. Whether a student misses a week of school due to COVID or has to miss multiple months of classroom time due to major illness, our organization is here to help. K-12 students will be tutored online and by medical students who have been extensively screened for competency and dedication. All of our tutors have undergone HIPAA training regarding privacy information, mandated reporter training and background screens as well. For more information, please visit our website at www.SproutVolunteerTutoring.com. If you'd like to directly talk to me about these services and whether we could help you within your classroom, please feel free to email me at shinc@cusm.org. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Shin. We appreciate you. Have a good night. All righty, folks, I believe that is it for our public comments. So, we're going to go back up to 2.1 as we have some special guests today, and we will be welcoming them back in. Our Del Valle Mariachi and Ibalay Boclo de Costa student performances. So, welcome, students. In Espanol. All right, we might have to play some music to bring them in, I think, right? We're ready. That's not him. Put your outfit on, Mr. Pace, if you're going to come in with them. All right, here they come. Let's give them a round of applause coming on in.
Can I just say, that was a wonderful performance? I do have one complaint, though. The mariachi band has to have a different attire. The polo shirt's not working. Alright, we're gonna get that, right? Whatever the boy has to do to make sure we have the authentic mariachi uniform, we're gonna have that. Thank you. You guys did a wonderful job.
We go. Thank you. Alright, so first off, if you can see me, I can see that.
Alrighty, great job again to Del Valle and our Mariachi Ballet Folklorico program. It's definitely grown, and I agree with Vice President Tillman. They need to look outstanding, and I know a few years back, actually, it was one of the first things that we did on the board. When I was on the board, we made sure all our sports and our VAPA programs were getting new uniforms. So I know that we have new uniforms very soon. Great job, though. Alright, we're gonna move back down to, excuse me, I gotta put my glasses on. Where are we at? 4.0, closed session. 4.1, closed session, public comments. And I believe that was also moved to 4.2, which is now closed, closed session, public comment, correct? Ms. Cunningham, I believe.
4.1 is a public comment on employee discipline dismissal release.
Okay, then 4.1, please. Thank you. Any public comments? We have one? Alrighty. Good evening and welcome.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I hope everyone's having a great day thus far. My name is Lorinda M. Kern, and I'm an instructional tutor at Pacific High School. I've been there since 2012. I have played a vital role in the Pacific High School campus with the special education department. I work with the RSP students that are mainstream in the general education population. I help students with their IEP struggles and goals. I have assisted with many RSP students' success towards graduation, personal goals, job search, college goals, and self-esteem building. One of the things I am most proud of is building a digital, I'm sorry, digital portfolios for my assigned students. That provides them clear, detailed help with their assignments. The portfolio allows students to work at their pace, use their own ideas, and complete their assignments on time to keep their grades healthy. I provide tutoring outside of our assigned classes online when needed, and the students receive the assignments earlier than the other students. This program has provided students with increased learning of unit lessons, assignment expectations, and a feeling of accomplishment. The digital portfolios are important for students, teachers, and Pacific High School, because it raises the bar of special education student performance and success. A second thing I am most proud of contributing to the students at Pacific High School is donating jewelry and accessories from my own fashion boutique. I donate it to the Hero Store. The Hero Store is a store that allows students to shop for prizes with the points they earn from staff for being a positive student. Adding the jewelry and accessories from my business allows students to pick gifts from themselves, friends, and family. In addition, it provides students the opportunity to use the accessories to style for homecoming, winter formal, and prom. I have had issues with attendance and were sometimes out of my control. I had to deal with domestic abuse that caused my children and I to relocate and start completely over without assistance or support. This led to health problems that I had struggled with and had to figure things out and do my own research on strategies on how to improve my health without using different types of medication that was causing me to feel even worse. For example, like, like I had to change my milk. Like, instead of drinking like regular milk, I had to change like to, like almond milk. I had to eat more vegetables, drink more orange juice. So those are the type of changes that I had to make. In addition, I am unable to skip meals or snacks. For good health, I have to have three balanced meals and snacks every day. In addition to getting more rest and taking time out to just take care of me, to help me boost my physical and mental health, so I can be available as a mother, paraprofessional, and a woman. At the end of the 2022, 2023 school, I finally got everything in order, back on track and in a good space mentally and physically. The 2023, 2024 school year, I was given new contract hours to begin work at 8:30 AM. Since school started July 31st, 2023, I have improved my attendance and tardiness. I have been arriving to work on time every day and been present to serve the students and teachers. I would like another chance to prove that I can improve my attendance. I have made drastic changes in my life that will make a difference in my overall success at work. I want to continue to build the rapport with my students and teacher at Pacific High School. I'm sorry. To assist with the campus goals of student success. I care about my job and the students that I serve. I would like to continue to follow my journey towards improving, meeting my professional goals and working relationships at Pacific High School. I'm sorry, guys. Thank you for your time, support, and consideration. And I just wanted, I had had some things just to give to you guys. Just a copy of my presentation, and then just like one of the, my doctor's things that I had for proof of like health issue that I had. And then a copy of my most recent timesheet showing my attendance and some letters from students. They didn't, they had given me these letters last year. Usually I don't get letters from the students, like during teacher appreciation, but for some reason, last school year, they gave them to me, so I saved them. So I just have those to give to you guys.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can you give them to Ms. Cunningham, and then she'll give them to us? Thank you very much. Alright, thank you for your comments, Ms. Kern. We'll go ahead and move on to a statement of charges. The recommendation for dismissal is based upon the attached statement of charges, which alleges that by your actions or omissions, you commit acts that constitute cause for discipline pursuant to the following provision of personal commission rules. Article 19.1.5.1, incompetency or inefficiency, the continuing inability or unwillingness to perform the regularly assigned duties and responsibilities of the position. 19.1.5.2, insubordination, knowingly refusing to perform lawful and unreasonable assigned duties or refusing to perform those duties in accordance with established or prescribed procedures, challenging, resisting, defying, or demonstrating contempt toward a designated supervisor or other school district official having authority to issue directions and instructions to an employee by the nature of their position. Article 19.1.5.3, any will for persistent violation of the education code or personnel commission rules and regulations or the procedures adopted by the district or department when such procedures are made known to employees in writing. Article 19.1.5.1.8, repeated unexcused absences or tardiness, abuse of leave privileges or absence without notification. 19.1.5.2.1, inattention to or dereliction of duty, a pattern of continued neglect or dereliction of performance of assigned duties and responsibilities. You are further notified, according to government code section 54957, you have the right to have this matter considered by the board in open session rather than closed session. If you desire to have the matter heard in open session, public session, you must notify your secretary labor relations and compliance officer by 3:30 PM on September 18th, 2023. Alright, we'll move on now. Is there any other closed session comments, Ms. Cunningham?
No, there's not.
Alright, then we will go ahead to, which would be now 4.3 and, or 4.2, and recess to closed session. Thank you. Alrighty, folks, we'll get started here. Looks like a wonderful group coming up here next, so you know, all these A.D.s and coaches and athletes on, a pretty wild group. You have to tell them to be quiet out there, but no, we're just joking. Anyway, folks, coming back from closed session, back into open session, so welcome, everybody. Thank you for being patient. We will move on to 5.1, approval of elementary school vice principal. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves appointment of the following employee, Larry Harris, elementary school vice principal, Hunt Elementary School. Effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
Vote.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman. Second, Ms. Rosales Medina, any discussion? Alright, hearing, seeing none. Let's go ahead and vote electronically. It'll only be board members at this time, not student board members. Mine's working perfect. Alright, motion carries. Dr. Funches, let's welcome our, our newest vice principal.
Mr. Larry Harris and family. Of course, I have the pleasure of introducing Mr. Larry Harris to you tonight. Mr. Harris was a teacher in San Bernardino City Unified back in 2012 to 2019, San Bernardino High School. Spanish teacher. He's bilingual, like myself. I thought I'd get that in there. He did complete our aspiring administrators program, and we wanted to hire this young man, but he escaped and went to Riverside Unified, but he is back. He possesses an exceptional work ethic, dedicating countless hours to ensure the smooth running of any school that he is placed at. And also, he is visible and accessible to parents prioritizing open lines of communication that align with the goals of the San Bernardino City Unified School District. I introduce to you Mr. Larry Harris.
Good evening. Good evening, Superintendent Mariano. Good evening, Board President Dr. Wyatt. Good evening, Board Vice President Danny Tillman. Board members, it is an honor and pleasure to be here. Estoy contento de estar aqui, y estoy listo para servir la comunidad. Once again, I worked for San Bernardino High School for almost seven years. As a Spanish teacher, I had students coming into my class, and they would give me a look and ask me, are you the Spanish teacher? Yes, I'm the Spanish teacher. Once again, it's an honor to be here, and I'm ready to serve the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, and welcome. It looks like you may have some family with you. Would you like to introduce your family members?
This is my son, Nico. He's 10. And my daughter, Sophia. She's eight.
My little one, Noah. He's three.
Right on.
Thank you, once again.
And thank you to all your beautiful children for staying up late with daddy. I'm sure you're real proud of them, right? Vice President Tillman?
And my wife.
Oh, my goodness. I didn't see her over there. Don't forget her. She should have been first. My God, Mr. Harris.
She's a teacher at Cohon High School. She's been there for 13 years.
Where at?
Cohon High School.
Alright, go Cowboys! Alright. We'll say go Cardinals, since you taught there, too.
Well, let me just say this, you know, the higher up you go in the organization, the more political it becomes. The first thing you do in an introduction is you have to introduce your wife first.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Trust, Vice President Tillman, he's been here all like 28 years up here, so, or something. I could count after 25, but alright. Well, congratulations again, sir. Yes, sir. Alright, moving on to 5.2. Yep, we'll give him another clap, Brown. Approval of middle school vice principal. Be resolved, the- Be resolved, the board of education approves appointment of foreign employee Kirsten Martin, middle school vice principal, Martin Luther King Middle School, effective date, work year and salary to be determined.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Rosas Medina, any discussion or comments? Hearing seen none, let's go ahead and vote. Hey, motion carries, Dr. Funches.
All right, board, we have another exceptional hire for middle school vice principal, Mrs. Kirsten Martin, has done a phenomenal job in employee development over the last few years, but a teacher at Richardson Middle, uh, Richardson Prep High from two thousand ten to two thousand eighteen. I would like you to know that she has been a part of building our award-winning onboarding program, which we received a golden bell for, and our state-recognized teacher induction program. Great job, Mrs. Kirsten Martin. Um, a few more things she has in an end of, she has an individual, she's an individual who is highly committed to the task of coaching educators and making sure that they shine in their first three years of service in the district. And she has an authentic desire to serve at Martin Luther King Middle School. I introduce to you Mrs. Kirsten Martin.
Good evening, Superintendent Ariano, Board President Dr. Wyatt, Vice President Tillman and esteemed board members. I stand before you tonight with a heart full of gratitude. It is both an honor and a privilege to accept the appointment as vice principal of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. First and foremost, I want to express my heartfelt thanks to those who have been instrumental in my journey here. Dr. Natalie Raimundo, your belief in me and investment in my growth as a math teacher at Rich, at Richardson Prep High Middle School paved the way for this opportunity. Reflecting on the past four and a half years, I am overwhelmed with fondness and appreciation. As an instructional coach for employee development, I've had the privilege of working under the leadership of incredible individuals, including Mary Pierce, Shanna Smith and Sarah McCain. These experiences have shaped me into the instructional leader I am today. I must also extend my gratitude to Ms. Clark, Dr. Funches and Marisol Sanchez for providing me with the time and opportunities to embark on this new journey. In our new employee orientations, we often say that we are bound together by a shared sense of community and support. It is my own S B C U S D family that has led me to this moment. I have had the privilege of welcoming hundreds of new employees to our family at countless orientations. And today I stand before you as a testament to the power of our community. I eagerly anticipate joining my new family at King Middle School. I am filled with excitement at the prospect of working alongside students and staff to nurture a college-going culture where every student can achieve academic success. In closing, I extend my deepest gratitude to each of you for entrusting me with this role. Together, as a family, we will make a difference in the lives of our students and continue to build a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank, oh, thank you, it's run, do you have any family here with you this evening? All right, well, congratulations again and welcome. All right, we'll move on to five point three, approval assistant director, expanded learning, sunrise and caps. Be resolved, the board of education approves appointment of foreign employee M. Yvette Peters, assistant director, expanded learning sunrise caps, effective date, work year and salary to be determined.
Both. Second.
All right, Vice President Tillman has motioned, second by Ms. Alexander, any discussion? Hearing seen none, all right, Dr. Funches.
Last but not least, very excited for Ms. Yvette Peters. Been with us since nineteen ninety-eight came in.
I think we have, sorry, Dr. Funch, I was moving around along expeditiously, we might have to vote. Just make sure. So we'll vote, all right, there it is in front of me now, we got the big stop sign says stop.
That's right, it doesn't do that.
All right, there we go, Dr. Funch, motion carries.
Let me try this again. Ms. Yvette Peters came into the district back in nineteen ninety-eight along with my, along with myself as a teacher, has been here as an educator, vice principal, now principal uh, at Lancashire Elementary School. A couple of things about Mrs. Peters, she embodies the values of spirit spirituality, gratitude, hope, humor and fairness. Uh, she has gained the respect of the community and her colleagues based on her tireless efforts to boost student performance at every school that she's been at. And by God, she's just an excellent individual. Ms. Yvette Peters.
Good evening, President, uh, Dr. Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, our wonderful board members and our esteemed cabinet as well. As I stand before you, transitioning from my role as one of your elementary principals to the assistant director of expanding learning, I am filled with humbleness and gratitude. The nearly four and a half years that I have spent at Lancashire Elementary has been a journey of growth, learning and countless treasured memories. And to my Lancashire family who may be looking right now, as I embark on this new journey, I carry with me the experiences, lessons and love from our past and shared experiences, hoping now to build a brighter future for all of our scholars throughout the district. As the assistant director of expanding learning programs, you have my guarantee that I will continue to champion opportunities for scholars and ensure they receive the best start and finish to their school day. Thank you for your trust and I am so thrilled for this new opportunity. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Peters. And do you have some family here tonight with you? Oh, you're nailing right there, family, absolutely, so let's, let's acknowledge your, your extended family back there, so good to see you all.
Thank you so much, family.
All right, good job fam, we're moving on to five point four, expulsion of students. Be resolved, the board of education accepts and adopts recommendation findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's finding of facts and recommendations or expulsion of foreign students with the identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the educate, uh, the board rules and regulations and compliance with education code section forty-eight nine hundred.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Chusky, second by Ms. Rosas Medina, any discussion? Hearing seen none, let's go ahead and vote. Hey, motion carries, moving on to five point five. Be resolved, the board of education accepts and adopts recommendation findings of facts of positive development and orders of suspension or expulsion of following students with identification number as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with education code section forty-eight nine hundred.
I'll move.
It's been moved by Ms. Chusky, second by Ms. Alexander, any discussion? Hearing seen none, let's go ahead and vote. Hey, motion carries, moving on to five point six. Be resolved, the board of education authorized the readmission of following student with the identif, identification number as indicated below to the schools of San Bernardino Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with education code section forty-eight nine hundred.
I'll move. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Chusky, second by Vice President Tillman, any discussion? All right, hearing seen none, let's go ahead and vote. Hey, motion carries, five point seven are closed session action, there is no other closed session action, so we'll move on to six point oh, administrative reports and presentations, six point one, athletic strategic plan, two point oh, uh, student services, all right.
Right, so we are very, very excited to be able to bring to you our athletic strategic plan two point oh, under the leadership of uh, Mr. Leonard Buckner and support from Dr. Marlene Bykandova. The members of the athletic strategic planning team are amazing and dedicated educators as well as community members. We have legends um, who are part of this team. I wanted to give a shout out to Mr. McGarry, who has tirelessly for generations created wonderful, wonderful athletes and scholars that have given back to this community for so many years. But we have many others who are um, star makers, they're, they're professional athlete creators and nurturers. And so we're excited that we're able to bring to you today um, this information and hopefully um, provide you with um, more information about our next steps as well as how you can support this plan. So I'll pass it over to you, Mr. Buckner.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Rodriguez. Uh, good evening, board, uh, Dr. Wyatt, uh, board president, uh, Mr. Tillman, board vice president and superintendent Ariano and all the other board members as well as our cabinet. So as Dr. Rodriguez said, I'm Leonard Buckner, I'm the director of enrollment and placement services. And under Dr. Rodriguez's direction, I've had the honor of facilitating the athletic strategic plan committee uh, for the last three years. And so our purpose tonight is to showcase what the A S P committee has achieved over the last eight years and highlight where we desire to go to in the future with the board's gracious support. I will now present Carrie Gilbreth, one of our parents on the committee, to lead us through the presentation.
I would like to give a shout out to um, your A V department that had me all set up for this. Well, good evening, um, it has been great to be here for two really good news things tonight, first with Making Hope Happen earlier this evening and now with the Athletic Strategic Plan. Um, I'm Carrie Gilbreth and eight years ago, we started this endeavor where the school district came up with the seven pillars. The board um, members that were there agreed that there needed to be an eighth pillar and that eighth pillar needed to be athletics. And that is when the Athletic Strategic Plan began. So a thank you for the board members that were here to get us started and a thank you to the board members who have been here to support us along the way. We really appreciate it and we welcome our new board members and Superintendent Ariano for the first presentation that we will give hopefully of many in the years to come with this. So I'm Carrie Gilbreth, I am an alumni, um, and congratulations to the new assistant principal of King. I went to King along with Alessandro, Rio Vista, Golden Valley and Cohone and a parent um, to two kiddos, which one of my youngest of which is now a um, a senior at Cohone of all things, man, they grow fast. So with that, we'd like to go ahead and get started and on behalf of all of us um, here tonight, which you see the whole A S P committee plus all of our athletic directors and coordinators at the elementary and high, uh, middle school levels as well, we really appreciate you tonight. And uh, Leonard, we're a lot to wrangle, so we really appreciate you from that and Dr. Rodriguez, thank you for your leadership. So let's go ahead and get started and talk about what eight years has gotten us. So the reason why we built this as a, as a eighth pillar in the strategic plan is because we realized that athletics in San Bernardino, it, it builds personal traits that carries our kids through their adulthood, through college, through career and through life. And for our student board members, do you, do any of you play sports? What do you play?
Apparently I play uh, basketball, but I'm gonna do basketball, uh, next year I'm gonna do basketball, football and softball.
That's rad. What school?
Uh, if you guys check out the first page of the uh, of this packet, you can see in the middle of the picture, so Pacific, so I want to give a big shout out to the people that attended Pacific Pirates.
Pacific Pirates. Very good, congratulations. And what about you?
Um, I did cross country and tennis.
At what school?
Aurora Valley.
Where's our Aurora Valley A D? Right over there. There you go, and what about you?
Oh, oh, hi, my name is Izzy, I played for freshman, sophomore and junior year, currently not, not this year, but I did cross country and track and field freshman year, cross country, track and field uh, sophomore year and water polo sophomore year and then junior year I played water polo.
Well done, what school?
San Gorgonio.
Wow, Mr. Mado.
Coach Mado, yes.
Shout out to three great schools and three student athletes that show exactly what athletics does when they're sitting up here today on with overall successes. So we know that it builds character as the three of you are sitting here today, confidence, teamwork, sportsmanship. It, it's for his healthy bodies and healthy minds and, and for a city like San Bernardino, we know that our students drive our perception change and we know our city, it's a challenge for us in our city and how great that our students drive the positive perception for our city. So thank you three for leading the way with that. Um, we can say that a lot, but the stats have to back us up. So we did just want to share with you as, as we talked about earlier tonight, I heard a few quotes toward it, but our student athletes, their student, you'll see attendance above and beyond, you see the elevated GPA and you see where they end up in their top graduating class. And while I can sit here and talk about that as a parent, it doesn't, it doesn't hit home as much as when you hear about it from parents who have raised multiple kids in our district and still have them and for students who come full circle and benefited from it from the first year. And so with that, I would like to introduce a parent of ours who is the other parent on our committee and that's Navida Rubio, San Gorgonio. We'd like to share a little bit of her story.
Hi, sorry, I'm nervous. Hi, my name is Narita Rubio, um, I have three beautiful children um, that I have two kids that went to San Gorgonio and I have one that's currently there. Um, my first um, son, he graduated year twenty twenty and he graduated with a GPA of three point eight. He was a multi-sport student and when he graduated, he was able to, he was part of that, the team when we went to state. So thank you for that because you guys were part of that too with, you guys took us there. Um, he was able to get a scholarship um, for a D two university in Colorado. Um, I also have a, my second daughter, she graduated last year, she's my, my daughter. And um, she graduated with a four point two GPA, she got a presidential scholarship at um, Cal Baptist and um, she was a cheerleader there. And my son right now, he's a junior and um, he's doing great, he's multi-sports, he does football and he does um, track. And I just want to give you a little backstory of how it started, I'll be really fast. Um, my husband and myself grew up as, we didn't grow up in San Bernardino, but you could kind of get the term of, we grew up like San Bernardino kids. Um, I was a sixteen-year-old pregnant with my first child. My husband had barely um, came out of jail for, he had caught a case for being at the wrong place at the wrong time. We were those kids, those teenagers that didn't have parent guidance. Um, we were just all over the place. So we had kids, we grew up, we started going to church and for us, let me take it to two thousand sixteen, my oldest was about to start high school and for us, it was really important to find a right place for our kids. It was gonna determine not only a place where they were gonna play school, but a place where they were gonna be able to have God and school and succeed at the same time. So for us, it was really important to find a school. We were currently living in San Bernardino, our kids have been in San Bernardino since kindergarten. They went to Emerton, um, Rodriguez and obviously Sanji. So for us, it was really important. So at that moment, you know, you have this fifteen-year-old that is really good, a D B that's really good and he's a little superstar on the field on Little League, so we said he has something. So where should I take him? Should we keep him in San Bernardino or should we take him to Citrus or should we take him to Summit? So at that point, it was something that we prayed over. Um, my husband and myself, we were youth pastors, so it was really important um, in San Bernardino, so for us, it was really important to say, okay, do we stay in the city where we guide other youth and is it gonna do, is the city gonna do our kids good? And I spoke to some alumnis at San Gorgonio, from San Gorgonio, and they told us, keep them there, keep them at Sanji. And I said, why? Why? I don't want my kid to turn into what I was. And they said, because San Gorgonio Athletics is focused. They focus on their grades, they, and they have an opportunity. They focus on their grades, and they have an opportunity. I'm really grateful that I, we decided to keep my son at San Gregorio at that stage, at that point. Like I said, my son was able to graduate. He was really, like, he's really good. He was really on top of his grades. I'm glad that I left my daughter there, because she was really good. I cheer her grades, and right now with my youngest. And my son was able to, us as a family, because when we took in sports, we took in sports as a family. Everything we do, we do as a family. At Sanji, we're known as the Rubio family, because we really invested into saying, if that's our kid's school, we're gonna invest in them. The same way that you guys have invested into our schools, into our sports, you know, we could see that, I can see that. My son started seven years ago, and this committee started eight years ago, and my kids have been able to enjoy those fields. My kids have been able to enjoy those uniforms. My kids have been able to enjoy every single penny, every single contribution that you guys have put into that. Like I said, we were able to go to state when 2018, and we enjoyed that trip. My kid enjoyed that trip. Not only my kid, but all these boys in that football field enjoyed that trip. When we got that new field, we enjoyed the heck out of it, because we won CIF, we went regionals, we had so much fun. Last year, our soccer team, they, I think it was state, if I'm, it was awesome. So in my, in my family's name, the Rubio family, and all these other families at San Gregorio, I want to say thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, so much for your contributions from the past years. And most importantly, thank you so much for the things that you're gonna keep on doing for our kids, because other parents might not know where it's coming from, but your time, the time that you guys spend here, all this, which is a lot, it's worth it, because those kids, maybe I beat the odds, but there's gonna be kids that have made it out of the hood, and it's really thanks to you, guys. And thank you to all the athletic directors, thank you to everyone that's here, because honestly, as a parent, I would have never have imagined. Thank you to Mado for giving me this opportunity to be here. He's awesome. He's, he's an awesome A.D., to be honest. Like, I, thank you so much, you guys.
And you know what? The Rubio family is one of many families. So thank you for setting the stage for what athletics can be, and the family support that we all need to be giving with that, which is great. So what we've accomplished in just eight years, you know, as I mentioned before, we have elementary, middle, and high school here represented. We have Amy Gazinga with our elementary. We have Aaron with Serrano Middle School, and former softball player. Yes, ma'am. And we have, we have Rich and Matt here to speak on behalf of the high school. And we are moving quick, because we know it's almost nine o'clock, but we see how awake everyone is at nine o'clock at night. So just to go over quickly on what we've accomplished in just eight years, and those accomplishments would not happen without your approval, your support, your support emotionally, financially, all of the above. So Amy, what have we won at the elementary level?
Well, at the elementary level, I wanted to thank you, guys, because we started this program with five schools, five teachers doing it on their own, no pay, just out of the goodness. We have 41 schools participating in elementary athletics right now. Today, I was just at a game. There was 200 of our family members at the game. Soccer is in full season, and we have over 2,000 student athletes at elementary, and 15,000 of our kids are running in our running club. So thank you.
Good evening, President Dr. Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Board of Education, Superintendent Ariano, and the Superintendent Cabinet. Sports are extremely important at the middle school level. They allow our scholars in a safe environment to try different sports, learn lessons that are integral to athletics, and provide a base and strong understanding of what it means to be a student athlete and the expectations that will be present in high school. Most importantly, middle school sports are inclusive. Principal Guerrero from Curtis Middle School shared a story from a recent cross-country meet where a student who was being serviced in the mild, moderate, special day class, ranked top five, and his mother in our last cross-country meet, ranked top five, and his mother ran across the field, embraced her son, and said, see, son, you are going to make something of yourself. It was a beautiful moment that underlined the need to provide and celebrate all kinds of talent. Thank you for your continued support to our scholars. Sports positively connect students who may not otherwise be connected to school, and most importantly, provides opportunities of success earned by hard work and perseverance.
I'm so proud, I'm so proud of Amy and Aaron. They never want to speak. And our parent, Ms. Rubio, she's tremendous. She comes to all of our meetings. We were tasked with this eight years ago, and we have, we have, you have done so much in eight years for us that hadn't been done for decades, I mean, decades. Mr. Ariano and I grew up together, and we can attest, there wasn't these things that have been done. We have done a lot and a great deal of facilities for our high schools. That was a major crux in the beginning, and, but we also set up a base budget, and that has helped us with everything we've done. I'll let Mr. Howell speak, because he's getting to the end of his career, so I'm gonna let him speak.
Rich likes to point out how much older I am than, than he is at every opportunity. I don't have a lot to add. I just want to thank you, guys, for what you've done. Thank you, Antonio, for what you're doing. I want to make sure that we keep the ball rolling. You know, like Rich said, I'm a short timer, so, but I'm gonna be around, and I want to see the strides that we've made thus far continue. So again, thank you very much for, for what you've accomplished. Unlike Rich, who's been here for, as he pointed out, decades and decades and decades, I was relatively new to San Bernardino. I came from Riverside 22 years ago. I'm happy. So I didn't see all the things that, that he has seen, but we have a very bright future, and it's thanks to you. So thank you very much.
And I think by Mr. Howell saying he wants to keep the ball rolling, he, he will continue onboard like Mr. McGary did. So I love the volunteerism. I'm far into retirement, but everything in red is what you made happen. Round-trip transportation for middle school, so the parents aren't trying to get the kids to and from at 2:30 in the afternoon. Making sure, and this was huge, that you have athletic clearance now at the middle school level, so that kids understand when they go to high school, they have to have grades, they have to be able to meet certain criteria. Lot easier, huh? When it's already set in stone. So, and then to have the added funding support from extended learning and caps, it, it has completely changed what we can do with kids, starting in elementary school and going on. So thank you for that. And what does that mean? What does that mean when we provide early access? And last year, you gave us the support to be able to do that in all sports, not just certain sports. It means that we build them young, so that then, as they get older, number one, they have the character, the sportsmanship, all of the above, that leads to what, what we own today, and that's league championships, CIF championships, state championships, and college and professional sports. So what can we accomplish now in 2023 and beyond? Well, in front of you, or actually soon to be in front, in front of you, in front of you already, is the Athletic Strategic Plan 2.0. It is what we are requesting to be adopted. And with that, we have the, our goal, which we talked about last year, is to become the urban state model on K-12 athletics. You have done a remarkable job. Again, as we said, other cities and school districts rely on private clubs to teach their kids at a young level. You changed that. You changed that game, and now we offer that opportunity, and that is unbelievable. But with that, and what you're going to see are goals that include school culture, infrastructure, life skills, wellness, academics in college, and personnel. And then the last thing that's not on there that's very important for us to talk about this year, what you have done with the foundational improvements and foundational investments you've made over the last eight years. It allows us to now do a big part of our goal for next year, which is to market and celebrate athletic success in San Bernardino. It's a game changer for us, and we need to be able to do that. When, when our kids are driven to success, and, and athletics is a fantastic carrot, it changes the game, and it lets us really celebrate. And we are the model that everyone else follows. Not that I'm a little competitive, but maybe we all are, and you know what? It's not bad to be once in a while, right? We are talking about sports. So with that, we are going to ask for your adoption. It doesn't need to happen tonight, but we're absolutely gonna ask for it. But we are also gonna talk about ongoing investments, and if you notice, you've given, you've been so good to us, we've, we've, that list has come far down, so thank you, and hopefully, we're delivering on that in return. So the few things we're gonna ask for, for an ongoing level, is one, effective and proactive field and facility maintenance plan at all of our schools. That's something that's a, I'll just be honest, it's a continual challenge in every school district. I mean, maintaining fields is, it's tough, especially when they aren't turf fields. It's, it's a challenge, but if we could have a proactive plan on that, especially since we have every single elementary school now participating in sports, we want to make sure those kids are running well. A proportional distribution of coaching stipends, that is a, that is something that we have, that's a huge challenge. We have very different sized schools, and so with that, we have, we have different numbers of teams at every single school, and we want to make sure that we can, we can, we have the adequate number of coaching stipends per school to make sure that we're, we're being able to field teams for every kid that, that wants and has the ability to play at every level. District covered transportation costs for high school. We just want to make sure that's ongoing. We want to thank you in advance now, because we know those extra costs came in during COVID, and those are, those are some scary prices on bus land. And not only that, but you know, we, we thank you, because we win, and we have to have more buses, because we have a lot more games. So that's a good problem to have, right? So thank you all for that. And the last ask, it ties to the middle schools as we're, as we're getting kids used to what they're gonna be doing in high school as athletes. And that's considering district-funded onsite athletic clearance physicals at each middle and high school. And one of the challenges we're having is we're realizing that our kiddos, our students, I'm sorry, our student, our scholar athletes, I get into kiddo land, and I know that that's not, that's not the right term. But we want to make sure, we know that transportation is a challenge for our kids, and we want to make sure that's available. And one of the best suggestions, Mr. McGary, thank you for that, to, to put it in simple terms, is do it like we have photo day. Like, every, every school, every year has picture day, and every school, every year could have physical day. And so those are things we would like to request for consideration for you for ongoing. And then for one-time investments, and we know that this, this is long-term, but you asked us for these last year, so we brought them back again this year, which we appreciate in terms of different things, but you asked for what, what we see on the horizon. For elementary school, that's for field and shade upgrades. One of our biggest challenges at elementary is, it's just hot out. It's hot in San Bernardino. And when you get into August, it gets really hot, and September. And the indoor PE classroom and facility designated at each school, both of those tie to inclement weather. For middle schools, we have eight remaining sites without gyms and field upgrades there as well, since we have so many out, we have so many sports now on the field. High schools, we have lighting. Those are going on at some of the schools now. I'll tell you, that is one heck of an investment when you see what those, what lighting looks like at a high school. It is unbelievable, making sure that we stay able to do that with the late start time change. Facilities upgrades, which could include, and these are at different schools, aquatics facilities, utilities, gyms, wrestling rooms, large equipment. And at San Andreas, ensuring we have partner funding for a wellness center and gym. And what does that bring us? Well, when we have winning athletic programs at the K-12 level, and we have quality facilities, and we have solid academics, and we have student safety, we have increased enrollment, we have higher test scores and GPAs, we have better attendance, and we have district and community pride. What's up? And we keep our, and we're gonna, you just gave us the great transition to how we end tonight. So with that, it also gets us to the 50/50, 80/95, that we're all, that we're all supporting and working toward this year. But as Rich just said, it keeps our kids here. And when we were talking about speakers for tonight, and this is, I'm gonna leave our presentation on one thing, because last year, if you remember, we brought you two students, and they were incredible, and they're doing incredible things. But as this started eight years ago, Mr. Howell actually had the idea of, of bringing back a student who saw it from the beginning, before there was anything, and now it's come full circle eight years later as a coach. And I would be lying if I didn't say that, that my mom heart was pretty proud when Mr. Howell recommended him, because that was nowhere near on my, on my recommendation, because I, you know, you, you never want to brag about yourself, but I am pretty proud about Cameron, who has now come full circle. So we'll end tonight on that.
Good evening, Board members. As you know, my name is Cameron Gilbreth. I'm the son of Carrie Gilbreth, one of Mr. Embriani's past athletes at Cajon High School. The Athletic Strategic Plan began when I was a freshman in high school, and before that, it was kind of put into consideration when they started bringing back middle school sports at Richardson Prep High, where I had the Tetlock family, as many of you all know, where we did have to figure out our transportation to schools, thankful to my mom for getting me there to all those events, and then leading into high school. My freshman year in high school, I played football and swimming, in which we kind of had to navigate things on our own in San Bernardino. On the football field, we were figuring out how to get around the gopher holes, our stands that were falling apart, and in the pool, navigating our sometimes working scoreboard, no lights and no bleachers out on our pool deck. Well, now today, things come full circle, in which I was able to say I was a proud cowboy at Cajon High School. I was a collegiate athlete for four years at Franklin College in Indiana, in which I majored in elementary education, and now I'm proud to say I can come back home to be a teacher, and I am now a water polo coach, thanks to Mr. Embriani at Cajon High School for Boyd's Water Polo. It's hard to believe how far sports have come, but it's all thanks to you, Board members, here today for San Bernardino. San Bernardino, as you know, we don't get the best rep to our fellow city areas, but when we put time and effort and funding into our sports programs, we give a lot of our kids a sense of family. I know school, middle school, especially high school, is daunting for a lot of us, but when you give them a community, and especially a family with our athletics programs, you create kids who come back and want to help the city even more, like I am here today. And that's all because of you, guys. Now, on the pool deck, which is where I see everything as of right now, we are getting a new scoreboard. We do have stands. Cajon has a brand-new turf field and track, all thanks to you, guys. And with the continued support and investment in our community and in our schools, you will see that as a return for you, and I hope I can be the first one of many in showing you that this is a great opportunity to help our kids and help in our future for San Bernardino. Thank you.
So I think that concludes our presentation today. We appreciate all of our A.D.s and community members being here today, and especially being able to hear from one of our alum, another cowboy in the house. We're really excited, and hopefully you'll come to work for us as a teacher. So thank you very much for your time today. I'll pass it back to Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Mr. Husky was over here trying to tell me something. All right. I will go ahead and start with Board member questions and comments, and I think we have student comments as well. You want to go first? We'll start with student comments, and how's that?
Thank you all for the presentations, but I want to give a special thank you to Mr. Howell for the support he's shown to student athletes at Arroyo, even at times of crisis, like the gym.
All right. Thank you, young man, and Vice President Tillman.
Thank you all for a great presentation, and welcome back, young man. I'm proud of you. You know, it, it's just great to see the results of the work that you all have put You know, it, it is, it's just great to see the results of the work that you all have put in. And, and the results of the board dedicating and making it priority to ensure that the sports are funded in the right way. And I've been to a few games recently and it's just nice to see the atmosphere, the new uniforms, the um, uh, the facilities, that's the way it should be. But I just want to make sure that the board members know and the public knows and, and, and you know, even the employees. It's all about communication, right? It's all about being active because um, I was on the board for some time and didn't even realize how dilapidated the um, programs were in the district. And because you, you know, even tonight, you know, the whole challenge is, it's late, we want to get out of here. And I always tell people, I don't mind long board, board meetings because we, we have to get things accomplished. And there's so much that gets accomplished here at these board meetings. And this is one of them. I mean, it was, it was the uh, I, 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 really the impetus was Jaden Daniels' mom, Regina Jackson. And uh, I had known her for years because her son played in Pop Warner with my son. And you know, Regina was always just, she's just an upfront person. But she came down with the practice uniform and she found the worst one she could find. I mean, the shirt was so holy, it was like two strings, you know, and she would say, this is the practice uniform. But what the, the point she made was, if you don't invest, then our students will take them someplace else, as their parents said. And um, then that's when the, the light went off. But ever since then, we've been supporting the programs. And I, I commend you all, you know, Mr. Embriani's best trait is, you know, my bugging people. He'll call you and say, hey, you got to come to the meeting and you got to be there. And, but when he makes the phone call, it's because he, he has an idea of what needs to be accomplished. And because of that, we've done a lot, even with this COVID money. We've, we've, we've been able to set aside millions of dollars to invest in the sports programs. Because we said, this is a priority and we're going to do it. And, and even, even through the changes in staff and employees and administrators, we've kept it moving. And that's what's important because in the end, it benefits our students. There's nothing more important than ensuring that our students are doing things that are constructive in our community. And so anywhere that happens, we have to support that. Any connection a student can make to a school is important. And I, I support it because in the end, it saves lives. And so I just, I can't thank you all enough for the work that you do. And uh, just hope we can continue to do this because in the end, it benefits so many of our kids. So let's, let's keep it moving in the right direction and thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman, Ms. Alexander.
Good evening. I would like to first say thank you all for what you do and just the time and energy that you've put into this whole strategic plan. I'm a firm believer, believer of student athletes and I, I am a believer that it does help them with their grades. And sometimes it's their, their solace away from home. So it doesn't go unnoticed that especially for the athletic directors, what you probably, with different hats you have to wear. And for you to put the time in, to put the, the strategy together and for eight years, the success you've been able to share with us, I commend you. I have a question related to the overall athletic program. Is it at every school? I know you touched upon it, but I wasn't sure.
So yes, the athletic, the athletic strategic plan covers every school, elementary, middle school, high school.
So are the, do the programs vary depending on the school and the demographics? Or you have pretty much the same type of programs at every school?
So high schools vary, you know, they may not, some high schools may not field a certain amount of teams just based on student numbers. So, but they all are involved in CIF and they may be in different leagues. Then you have middle school sports. And I think middle school is volleyball, basketball, soccer and softball. And cheerleading and cross country. And then elementary, there's soccer, basketball, softball, cheerleading and running club.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Husky.
Thank you. First, let me apologize for the sidebars. Normally the student board members leave at nine, but they want to give their reports. So I was trying to navigate their parents and all of that. So I apologize for the sidebars while I was doing that. First, I want to thank you to the board for their foresight to do this and to Mr. Maida and Mr. Embriani. Because I know, I, I was in you services, I remember you even talking to me, you know, about the situation that you guys have. So I appreciate your passion and dedication in, in just sticking with it. And the, the persistence and the patience that you had to, to help the board get it done for our kids. So I want to thank you for that. Mr. McGary, it's really good to see you. Well, I didn't, back then, we had to have female PE teachers. I didn't have you, but I know my brother did, Marty did. And um, and so it's just always really good to see you. It always puts a smile on my face because it's like, you know, oh, it's my teacher, well, y'all know. You know, I always say kiddos, that's one of my bad things, I look at my kiddos up here. They always have to be like, okay, we're not that young. So I appreciate Cameron and, and you know, both of you and your mom for being here tonight and for speaking. You know, one of the things that we're really good at is full circle. There's a lot of us here that have grown up here and are committed to our community. And I appreciate you coming back and giving back to the community that raised you. And that, and to you, Ms. Rubio, for you know, your dedication and sticking with us and, and helping us create a stronger community. It's really important because that's how we, that's how we're going to be San Bernardino strong. And that's how we're going to make everything, you know, just a little bit better. As part of that, my husband went to Cajon High School. And um, I took him to a football game. So we went to see the cheerleaders get their national championships, swing and watch the game. And um, so he hadn't been on the campus in a long time. It was great, we got a 1980, 90, 2000's picture with Dr. Rodriguez and Mayor Tran and Dave. But um, he just kept oohing and aahing over the facilities. He's like, it didn't look like that when I was here, didn't look like that when I was here. And you know, he got to on the field and he's like, oh my gosh, look at this turf. And so it was just really nice to be able to have this alumni come back and just see, you know, what we're doing for those kids. And he had a different appreciation even than I did. I mean, I thought it looked great, but watching his face and his pride as he saw his campus be that way. So I'm really excited about, about what we're doing. I'm excited about the, the pool and the middle school gyms because I know we're not done yet. I know this is a continuing investment and that it's something that this board is really dedicated to. Because we know the benefit, when our kids are involved and committed and have a link to their campus and athletics does that. Success is, 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 is great. And so thank you all because I know this is a lot of time and dedication on your part outside of your day job. So I really appreciate that as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Husky, Ms. Grande.
That's an amazing presentation and it, you know, I, I, I just, I'm glad that you mentioned all the previous boards. Because this first year that I've been a board member, I've constantly been told, thank you, thank you. And I feel sort of like, you know, I didn't do anything except just show up and get all the, you know, good stuff. But we must always honor that past and the people that helped us get, get to where we're going. And I know myself, in this city, I grew up, I raised two little girls all by myself and we struggled. But they both got into sports at a very young age here in this school district and it helped them. They were, I think Michael Land was MVP at San Bernardino High School. And softball gave them something, gave them structure. So for single parents that, that's a, athletics is a way where they can, they can work alongside, you know, males. And at that time, that was a big deal, they didn't have any models. So I honor each and every one of you that's out there. And then on another note, I do want, I love this part where you want to market and celebrate athletic successes. Because immediately I see, you know, our town needs to hear this. They need, every single person in this town needs to see this. And I just want to suggest that on your trips out of, to state championships, that you take photos and you write up your own stories. You're, you're all terrific writers here, I can tell. And send the stories down to Mary Roan over there in communications. And uh, you know, send her emails, send her, you know, just drown her. And maybe they'll give you a corner on the parent square. So it's live video or something, I can embed it, all kinds of, she's got all kinds of things you can do. So I, I honor you and I can, I'm excited to see what's next. And you know, I don't know, I, I hope I'm here in eight years. I'd like to see the end, how this story ends. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Ms. Rosales Medina.
Yes, no, definitely. Thank you for everything. I know for me personally, being part of track and field in elementary school, that kind of sparked my competitiveness. And uh, you know, and, and growing up in difficult situations, that was my family. And so for many of our students in the district, when they enter into sports, even in high school, middle school, that, they become their family. And so it creates a better avenue of success. And so I, I really do appreciate every single one of you that are doing the work that you're doing. And um, it, it also reminds me of when my, my children were in sports at San Corney High School. My daughter in volleyball and realizing that clubs are not an option for many of the families. And it's, and it's like, we can't afford that. And many of the students in the district could not afford that. So I'm glad that we pushed our district in a way that we don't need that. Because we are so competitive that we're probably doing a whole lot better than many of the clubs out there. So I, I really am glad that we're moving in that direction as well. So I'm just, and also with regards to getting this out there, maybe creating also press releases where other newspapers and other television, that they're actually seeing the work that we're doing. The fact that we have the, the uniforms as well, when teams, when other schools, other districts see our students, the way they're confident as well. I mean, it's really important. I know Mr. Tillman has always pushed for the uniforms, making sure that we're updating the uniforms from even back then. Because I've been on the board for almost nine years now and has been pushing it. I know it's Dr. Scott Wyatt and with this whole board. We're really supportive and we're glad that you came down with the presentation. So amazing I'm here to support in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. And I think it's my turn then Superintendent Ariano. You know, thank you again, always, great to see you guys. Thank you for inviting us also to your meetings when you have them. You know, that shirt that Mr. Regina Daniels brought, I actually thought it was actually Danny Tillman's shirt. All torn up because that used to be a cool looking shirt back in the eighties or seventies whenever he went to high school. But um, so I think it was one year old jerseys, Danny, that's what it was. But no, I, I seriously, that was actually one of my very first meetings and I'll, I'll never forget it to this day. The opportunity, I like the word power, but the opportunity and influence that this board can have on our school district, our employees, our students and our, our community. And uh, that was a real proud moment for me. You know, I'm glad that she brought that jersey here that day because our kids deserve the very best, just like any other kid anywhere. You know, they play, they play hard, they do a great job out there to win a lot of championships and we want them to look the same dang way. Also remember when Sanrio High School baseball team came and, and they came and told us, thank you as well. And that just meant a lot to me because I remember when I was in high school, I had the ugliest damn baseball outfit you could ever have. Probably because I bleached it, so that was my fault, but we didn't have any money to replace it. So I played this white and what was supposed to be maroon outfit, but it was white and orange. But uh, but again, it was a pretty dang ugly. So no, to all of you, just great job with our, our young men, young ladies, you know, coaching them takes a lot of time after work, on the weekends, you know, away from your family. You know, I know how much work you put into it to change their lives, to keep them out of trouble, to keep them coming to school, wanting to come to school. Same reason why I did, love sports and you know, you help put this city on the map as well, as well as our district too. So real proud of that. We know we have some big ticket items, big, big ticket items. You guys have made that very clear to us. I know this board wants to support you 110% every way we can, just like you give everything out on the field for our kids. But it's going to take a little bit more than what we have. And I, you know, this board, and we have another discussion that's coming to make sure that we can reach that milestone, you know, take us to the next level. We've seen those renderings, those artwork that's out there and I'm super excited about our future, I really am. And again, I know this board is as well. I appreciate each and every one of them for the support that they've given to you. Because it's not one, it's seven of us to make those decisions, it's a team. Sometimes we argue like a team does, you know, and between each other. But at the end of the day, we come together like family, we'll make the right decision for our kids, we'll make the right decision for you. So thank you again. Superintendent Ariano.
Very much. Well, let me begin by just offering my congratulations to the athletic directors. I look out and some very fine people that I've grown up with or I've read about over the years. So very proud of the work that all of you've done to really, you know, enhance our sports experience here for kids and the outcomes. And I'm going to get to the specifics to that here in a little bit. I also want to congratulate the Board of Education, especially the ones that started this many years ago. Danny, you are absolutely right. It saves lives. All of the extracurricular activities saves lives in many ways. As a matter of fact, it creates futures for many of us. And not, not all of us are star athletes, but the experience of being in those sports programs led to us learning about engaging with others. Discipline, pride for your school, pride for your community, pride for yourself. The element of teamwork and collaboration and, and team goals. Creating friendships that last forever, creating family that lasts forever. You know, I can tell you, Mr. McGary, this gentleman right here was a big part of my life. You know, and I was not a star athlete, but experiencing Mr. McGary, you know, really led me to me sitting here today. He taught us self-respect, discipline, teamwork, being on time, being organized, being neat, presenting yourself in the best way. All of the traits that we, we lead to success. And when we talk about family, I tell you, I hadn't seen Mr. McGary in 20 years. And my, my dad had passed away. And who comes walking through the door? Mr. McGary, you know, and I know he was walking through the door at Mr. Embriani's funeral. And that's what sports does, it's a family, you know, and I appreciate it. So you are changing lives and you're affecting lives in so many ways that we don't even see. And so I appreciate this investment that we're doing for our young people. And, and you've heard me say, our kids deserve the very best and you guys are really making that happen. So thank you for everybody and thank you for the efforts. And then Kerry and Cameron, my God, last time I saw Cameron, he was on the diving board at Arrowhead Country Club and he was 10 years old, right? With, with my daughter. So congratulations on your success and I'm glad that this community's had an impact like it's had on me in a positive way. And, and welcome back, brother. I'm glad, I'm glad you're giving back to our district. So you have my full support as the superintendent of this district. As I see the impact that we have on young people every day and it's growing more and more. So thank you guys because you, you made it happen for me too. So love you guys, thank you. And Mr. McGary, you know I love you, brother, always, always.
Thank you Superintendent Ariano. I'm pretty sure they love you too, man, so. But now folks, again, thank you for that great presentation. Just looking forward to being able to support you in every way possible. I know we have some big tasks ahead of us and that's all right. We have lofty goals for our city and for our kids and for you. And we're going to stand behind you, like I said, 110%, make sure that it happens. And again, thank you for this presentation. I know we've been waiting for a while, so appreciate your time and still not that late. And Ms. Tillman's right, we just, I think I've just been spoiling you guys lately, getting this out of here earlier. But it looks like we're going to have a decent meeting today. How's that decent one? All right, guys. Yes, sir, Coach.
Can you come to the mic? Can you come to?
Coach, you're going to have to come to the mic, you're not using that coach voice right now, we need you on the mic.
Because they can't hear you on the TV.
Yeah. I like that shirt too, by the way, man.
I said that I'm probably going to make my administration nervous, but uh, next Friday, Mr. Maida at San G and the Arroyo Valley Hawks. Are playing in a, a big football game for, for our league. So all of you cowboys up there, if you can put that aside for a little bit, we'd love to have you. So please, next Friday at 7 o'clock, is that okay with you, Mr. Maida?
Which film, Coach? Which film?
Uh, at Arroyo Valley.
Oh, Arroyo Valley?
Yep.
Don't, don't forget the Cardinals up here, you got a couple Cardinals.
I know.
I feel bad for them, but they're up here.
Like, like Superintendent Ariano said, we're all a family, so.
Until we get on that field and then maybe after, all right. Okay, Coach, thank you for the invitation, Ms. Rosales Medina.
I was going to make a suggestion, maybe we can have, even with the board, having a team compete. And, or you know how you see different, I've seen this at the state level where there, there's, you know, elected officials or even with, I'm not sure. But I'm just looking at like a friend, friendly event, an annual event where school board members, cabinet or staff.
Against the kids?
Against the students or even the staff, I don't know.
I hate to say it. I'm about to get those knee braces back out, man.
I think, I think we play them, they, don't let them fool you, they'll still look a bit silly.
I'm looking at like baseball, something that's simple, well, not easy of course, but.
Ariano might be the only ringers up here, I don't know. We put our two, our four legs together, we'll have two. How's that? So, yeah. No, there's, there's a lot more humbling sports. What is it? Paddle ball now, what do they call that thing?
Pickleball, that's safe.
The same dang thing, pickle paddle.
This is an idea, this is an idea.
I like that idea though, Ms. Rosales Medina, I do like that.
I pick Mr. McGary as my teammate. So I'd call him first, you know.
Well, I'm taking a little Gil breath. How's that? So, yeah, if I'm going to pick anybody over there, I'll pick him. All right, guys. Thank you again. And ladies, uh, appreciate you. Great presentation. And, and again, always excited for Friday night lights. I'll tell you that. That's always one of my favorite times. So good to see y'all. We're going to do a little shift here if, uh, our, our board does not mind, if we, uh, can go to 10.1 and have our student board members have their comments. I know they've been waiting patiently and, uh, you know, hopefully they've been enjoying the meeting as well and seeing their future ahead of us and learn a bit, a little bit about humor as well, cause that goes a long way. So we'll go ahead and start, we gotta start this time though, from our left to right and, uh, we'll start over with, uh-oh. Are you guys all prepared? Ms. Rosenbloom, are you not ready? Sometimes life.
I'm going to have to put a pause on that in just a second.
I was going to throw a curve ball at you. You know, you gotta be ready in life. That's how it, how things go. All right. Well, I'm sure Mr. Hernandez Nunez is ready. Are you ready? All right. Let's go with you, sir. Usually ladies first, but you go ahead.
Uh, good evening. My name is Antonio, Antonio Hernandez. I'm a senior at a Royal Valley. Um, last week, our football, football team won their game, um, Friday night, and this victory really lifted our school spirit. Also, there's an organization called ICUC that Mr. Martinez and Dr. Rodriguez have been working close with, uh, in regards to a grant for communities, community schools, which is for, which is good for us students and like our mental health. And I think it would really, it would greatly benefit us. Uh, speaking of ICUC, uh, there's a club sponsored by ICUC called Students for Change, um, which is a club that advocates for cha, for change. There's a, I believe there's a club at every high school campus. Um, but for my own, I'm the president of that club. And I've seen that many students have joined and they seem excited to learn on how to change our community. Uh, so, so many students have joined that we had to move from my advisors, the advisors classroom to the senior cafeteria, which is where we'll hold our club at for the rest of the semester. Um, and I really, I think that's really like great. Uh, but I want to end off by saying, by thanking, uh, the counselor I had my sophomore year, uh, Mrs. Rodriguez. She really helped me get out of my com, com, comfort zone and slowly but surely gain more confidence and ultimately getting me to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez Nunez. Well done. Ms. Rojo?
Right. Good, good evening, everyone. My name is Daisy Rojo from Middle College High School. I'm a senior. Um, um, I wanted to just touch upon the statement of, uh, Mr. Tillman mentioned seeing all the achievements and progress that the San Bernardino district has done so far and just, just being here is, is very inspiring as a student and just seeing like all the presentations and everything that gets done really, um, it's, it's overall like inspiring and encouraging for future leaders. Cause you get, you should, you see like all the achievements you've already done and like how you, you've gone so far already. So yeah, I definitely would be grateful for that. And some news, uh, regarding middle college, um, that we're all so grateful for is, uh, this past weekend, um, our principal, Mr. Espinoza, he surprised all the leaders on campus with, uh, Disneyland Leadership Comp, uh, little leadership, like field trip. And it, it helped all the leaders like get to know each other, but also just like, uh, for me, example, for speaking from, from my perspective, I, I've never been to Disneyland. So it was like, kind of like a different experience and the fact that, um, it was a surprise that Mr.'s, my, my principal just wanted to give, uh, was definitely, um, motivate, motivating and kind. So yeah, definitely grateful for that, that the district was able to, um, support that. As well as a shout out to Think Wise, who, uh, supported the seniors for senior sunrise around six in the morning, just to make some breakfast for us, which we're really grateful for. And it's a great experience that all the seniors got to part, but yeah, all the seniors got to participate in. Um, and then I want to, uh, touch a little bit about the subject of, uh, Bully Prevention Awareness Month this month. Um, regarding, um, my gratitude for middle college because, um, they, they really emphasize, to emphasize on the lack of violence or any form of bullying that I see at middle college is just, it's, it shows, it's like a reality check, um, to realize that it is happening. But I'm very gr, grateful for, you know, the, the push that they, that they have done so far with, um, not tolerating it. And so I'm grateful that the district is also, um, pushing that as well. And they just really focus on dis, distancing those distractions and, um, focusing more on academic success in order. Yeah. So aside from that, um, although I am looking, I am working on multiple broad projects, um, one, one I want to focus on, for this meeting is a request for more information, uh, regarding, um, if there's any board policies that prohibit high school student, high, high school student paid internships in the after school programs? Or if, or if there is regarding the discontinuation of the after school programs? Or if, if the discontinuation of the program has been, um, has any relation to insuff, insufficient funding, uh, regarding that information, that'd be really helpful. And if you have, if you have any questions, I.
So, so what are you asking? Can students work in the after school program?
Yes, uh, uh, paid, paying, paid internships in that, in after school program.
They can, right? Um, Mr. Funches?
There are a few, uh, administrative regulations and board policy that govern that. Um, and I think what you're asking for right now is a program at Richardson, um, Prep High. And what we're doing is we're gathering more information on that for you and working with the school site administrators. So there's some laws around that that we need to make sure that we adhere to.
Thank you. And well, overall, thank you so much for your time. Um, and yeah.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rojo. Ms. Rosenbloom?
Um, hi. Um, my name is Angelina Rosenbloom and I, I attend Pacific and, um, I'm currently a junior. Uh, I wanted to thank the, the CSOs and the, um, the, like the, the securities in the, the, the school police for making sure that like, you know, we're, we're like very protective, cause, um, sometimes school can be scary. And I, I want to take my gratitude to CSO. Um, I want to, I want to congratulate, uh, two CSOs. Because if it wasn't for them, I know like, like I wouldn't be able to like kind of push myself. I want to thank CSO Rojas and CSO Ms. M. Currently I didn't see her this week because she is currently, uh, dealing with some, some personal issues. I want to also thank my coaches, both Coach J and Coach G for pushing me for my freshman and my, uh, junior year, uh, or my freshman and my sophomore year, uh, basketball. And I also want to congratulate or gratitude. I want to have so much gratitude for Ms. Mickey because if it wasn't for her, I know I probably wouldn't be like sitting here. I'd probably be like somewhere else. And I wanted to, uh, finally gratitude to my, my, my freshman English teacher, uh, Ms. Navarro for still, uh, reaching out and making sure that I, um, that I still do my best. I want to appreciate the people that were able to run the, the HBCU, CU, uh, college fair at San G. Because I think I might be the, uh, depending, if I get this right, I think I'm, I might be right my, my information. I might be the first person to graduate college, uh, to be the first like, like African American mixed kids to graduate from a college, possibly a black college, um, area. Cause I do like, I've like already kind of looked at my, like my, my, uh, colleges. And like with basketball, I'm hoping, uh, that I can get like a recruitment. Cause I've already checked out a couple of colleges that have like what I'm looking for. And I just want to appreciate everything and everybody, everybody's timing and, and, and appreciation for coming out here. Cause I know we all got busy schedules and it's kind of hard to make time for things, but at least we appreciate each other. And like everybody has said before, we're treated like a family, especially how my coach treats us. She, she says, um, that we're, if like, if we, we're one big family. So one, one, one flaw is we all help, we help, we all gather around and help each other out. And like, and when you get hurt, famous theme of my coach says, you get hurt, you'll be all right. You'll, you'll be all right in this. So I just want to give a big shout out again to everybody for coming out here and, and, um, being out here with us, cause I'm still a little nervous. I don't know how I'm doing this, but, uh, I appreciate y'all.
Alrighty. Thank you, Ms. Rosenbloom. And thank you all three of you for staying a little bit late. I know it's a school night. So we're going to, you're like, I'm not, I'm not, this ain't late to us, right? Oh, we need to be good still. We know we're adults here. So we gotta make sure you get home by 10 o'clock at least. So, all right. Well, thank you all. You are excused if you would like to go home, which I think you need to. So, and we will continue. We appreciate your comments and your time. So have a good night. We'll see in a few weeks or a month or so. All right. Okay. We'll get back over to, let me get over there. Um, 7.0, uh, action items, 7.1, personnel report, uh, number six, date October 3rd, 2023, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions and terminations. As presented, moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any discussion? Hearing seen none. Let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 7.2. Where we get there. Be resolved, the board policy 3516.5, authorize superintendent designee to close the school site, change the regular school day schedule, take necessary action when adverse weather conditions or other emergencies warrant. Public contract code 20, 2113 also leaves the governing board of a school district from bidding requirements. When emergency repairs, alterations, worker improvements are necessary to permit the continuance of existing school classes or to avoid danger to life or property. I'm not going to read the whole thing, cause that's a lot more. So.
So moved.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. And, uh, I think Vice President Tillman, he beat you, Mr. Husky. I think it's by hair. So, um, any discussion? All right. Let's go ahead and vote. Ms. Rosenbloom?
Yay.
Thank you very much. And the rest of us will vote electronically. All right. Motion carries. Moving on to 8.0 consent list. 8.1 approval consent list.
I'm moved. Need a second.
You gotta be able to hear it there. All right. It's been moved and properly second by Ms., moved by Ms. Rosales Medina, second by Ms., um, Marion Grande. And now it asks for a discussion. Looks like Ms. Alexander, you have an item to pull?
Two.
Two? Just two? Okay. That's not too bad.
8.16.
8.16.
And 8.27.
8.27. Let me take a look at those real quick. All right. And on that one, you, one may have probably would accuse, recuse abstain. Okay. Any others to be pulled from anyone else? I do have two myself, which will be 8.31. As I am an employee of county schools, I will abstain on that one. And then 8.33, which I am the vice chair of Young Visionaries East Leadership Academy. I will recuse myself on that one when the time comes. All right. Any others to be pulled? All right, hearing seen none. Let's go ahead and vote on the consent list, uh, agenda as it has now been amended. Uh, Ms. Rosenbloom?
Uh.
All right. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to 8.16. Refutation of this, uh, disposition of electronic waste and furniture. Ms. Alexander?
So I just have a question related to that. Um, I see that we're disposing electronics, so computers and.
Just me. Just one second. I haven't finished, you haven't finished voting for.
Okay. My apologies. I thought it would write that. I voted two. It just, I don't think it came up yet. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Motion carries. Sorry. All right. And then so Ms. Alexander, any other question on the?
Disposition of electronic waste and furniture. What, what are the criteria for us to decide if we're going to dispose those items? And are, do we take other factors into consideration like donating them or other methods of disposition?
Uh, Ms. Alexander, there, there's, uh, multiple lenses we look at before we dispose, um, of obsolete or, uh, broken or otherwise not working condition. We do look to, uh, if we can recycle internally and we push those out to other departments, other school sites that might be in need. Uh, when we find items that are no longer functioning or beyond repair, that would make it a reasonable, uh, investment cost, uh, to the item. Those become part of our e-waste, but we do make every attempt to, as I say, salvage our, our equipment to, uh, to the extent possible. So for, uh, uh, maximize reuse of the product.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate the answer. I'm good.
All right. That was it, Ms. Alexander?
So moved.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Rosales Medina, second by Ms. Alexander. Any more discussion? Hearing seen none. Let's go ahead and vote on it. Okay, motion carries. Move on to 8.27. Agreement with Assistant's League of San Bernardino, no cost.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Rosales Medina, second by Ms. Chahusky. Discussion, Ms. Marion Grande? All right. Well, then at this time you would say that you abstain. Since it's a no cost contract, I'd recommend both you and Ms. Alexander abstain. But we will have to wait for Danny then, because we will need, uh, excuse me, Vice President Tillman, because we will need four folks to vote on this. So hopefully we ain't catching my.
President Wyatt, I'm sorry. Who motioned and seconded?
It was motioning.
Motioned and I made the motion and I seconded.
Alrighty. So, uh, Ms. Tillman, Vice President Tillman is now back. We had, uh, two abstentions and now on 8.27, we could go ahead and vote. All right. Motion carries. Uh, we'll move on to 8.31. And that one is for me. Again, as I mentioned earlier, I'm an employee of San Bernardino County Superior Schools. It's no cost and I will be abstaining on that.
Second. And I seconded. And that says ratification of the agreement, uh, with San Bernardino County Superintendent's of Schools, no cost.
8.31. 8.31. Alright, so we need to go ahead and vote.
And eight point three-three?
Sorry, alright, motion carries, so we'll go ahead and uh.
Eight point three-three, renewal agreement with Young Visionaries Youth Leadership Academy, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
So moved and seconded, vote please. Item passed, that brings us to nine. Reports, comments by union organizations, nine point one, San Bernardino Teachers Association.
No report.
Nine point two, California School Employees Association.
No report.
Nine point three, Communication Workers of America.
No report.
Nine point four, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
No report.
That brings us to item ten, reports, comments. We've had the reports from the student board members, and we'll start with board members, and I'll start from my left with Ms. Chahusky and go around.
Thank you. Um I wanna honor, uh we talked earlier with the resolution for our school administrators and honor them, um and thank them for all of their hard work. Uh we appreciate you and all that you do for our schools, our staff and our students. Um it's also Bullying Prevention Month this month. Um we had a parent speak to that, and that's something that is, you know, really important to me, that school safety. I talk about that all the time. Um and so I really want to hope that we highlight that and and really look at multiple ways. We have a a great program with our undercover anti-bullying team um that 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 we know works, but I'd like to see, you know, even some more supports um for our students um as we look through that this month. Um also, I'd like to honor, um it's Filipino Heritage Month. Um we had uh Black and Island Honor Roll this weekend. Um uh it was great to honor our students. Um and uh it they were just, it was just an amazing event. The families were just so proud, the students, there was one young man in a suit. Um I think I I think he was the highlight of uh Superintendent Ariano and my day, but they were just, they were just wonderful. And the the dancers and just everything was just, it was just such an amazing uplifting event. Um the speakers were um just heartfelt, um brought me to tears um at the Island Honor Roll. It was it was just a really wonderful event, so kudos to our our ETSA team and to you, Ms. Applegate, for an incredible, incredible event. Um I went to Fairfax for their preparedness ambassadors, they had third and fourth graders. Um there's a program within the state to to have these preparedness ambassadors that are are trained, that they come in and they teach them what to do in an emergency, and they were honored with certificates for completing their program and backpacks and such. And I there were, I was just so proud of them. Um but I am a little concerned just about the Fairfax playground and facility. Um the day I was there, they had broken pipes, so not only have we shortened their field by putting a road through the middle of it, they couldn't use the other part of the field because it was completely full of mud. I know MNO has probably been out to fix that, but um that school could really use some love. Um I I just, it's, you know, it's one of our older schools, hasn't had some of the modernization of the others. I know the road is taking some time, because there's like six different agencies, including the Army Corps of Engineers, that has to be involved to try to to fix the bridge situation into that um community. But I I really would hope that we could figure out some way to help support that community and that school um while they're waiting for everything to be fixed. Um I went to Emerton for their Helpful Honda, the Honda dealers, they got a help, they got um nominated for Helpful Honda, and every student in the school received a book, from the from the youngest to the oldest. Um San Gregonio High School had students there, they have a a childcare program, and they they do some of their hours and work at Emerton, so they were there to help cheer and everything on. But one of the things that it did, besides every student getting their own book to take home, take with them, read at their grade level, is they um they had many classes with perfect attendance that day. Like it 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 actually also improved and impacted their attendance that day. So it was really exciting, so kudos to Ms. Ramos and and to her staff um for an excellent um event. Um I attended the lead conference at Cal State San Bernardino, Dr. Murillo always does a wonderful job, it was on violence. Our own, uh Robert Rodriguez was um part of a panel that NEA put together there on a White House Task Force on gun violence. Um so if you get a chance, it was video, you can want to watch some of it. Um and then Emilio Rivera, I don't know if if Mr. Ariello is gonna talk about that, but he uh was from the Mayans, and he also spoke and told his story, and I would love to see him come in and talk to some of our students, particularly those that um have had drug and alcohol problems and Fs, have or or you know, have a lot of Fs, to inspire them on how to get out of it. Um lastly, I did the Mom Mob at Parkside, which is my alma mater, so go Parkside Panthers. And thank you, uh Ms. Medina, for doing the agenda review last night, I look forward, I'm hoping you'll talk about your experience like that. Um and thank you to those of you who have signed up for at least one, but I need everybody to sign up for at least two. I have some board members that haven't signed up for any, I would love one board member to sign up for three, I've already signed up for three. So I have a little sheet here um that with the dates that are still available. I'm gonna send it around, and then we can give it back to Ms. Cunningham, so she can put it on. But I need every board member to do at least two of them, and I need one to do three. So if you've already signed up for one, you know who you are, you need one more date. For the rest of you, you need two. The agenda review with the student board members the night before the board meeting, we talked about last time? Yeah, you gotta do two, too. You gotta mentor, you gotta mentor these guys, too, they need to hear from you, because you have the most experience and the most to share, so.
It was me.
Alright, Vice President Tillman.
Um to to Ms. To to Ms. Chahusky, uh Fairfax School is in line and approved already for modernization. So they're gonna get modernization. Uh no, they're ready, it's it's approved. I also uh went and visited Fairfax, The Rock Church was there, and they gave each student a brand-new pair of shoes. It was a great, it was a, it was a great uh event, that students were very excited about their um their shoes. Someone playing soccer, and they took their shoes off, played soccer in their socks, so they wouldn't get the shoes dirty. So I thought that was fun, exactly. But just want to uh thank The Rock Church for doing that, I think it was great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman, and let's see over to, oh, Mickey, Ms. Alexander, did you already go? Um well, actually, it's kinda, it's kinda messed up, so we'll just go this way. Ms. Marion.
Okay, um let's see. Shoes that fit, they went, I saw them at Jones Elementary School, they they uh also, their whole um philanthropy is to give shoes. Their goal is to give children new athletic shoes to attend school with dignity and joy. And that was a very joyous day, it was really exciting, it was so great. The principal, I can't reme- I don't recall her name, but she she was just wonderful, she was wonderful, I was really excited to be there. Um a second, I did attend my third Masters in Government's class in finance, and we were all not looking forward to it, and it turned out to be the best class ever, it was so exciting and live. Who knew numbers could be interesting? I've never known that. But it was very exciting. Uh and then, of course, there was our California Latina School Board Unity Conference that was sadly postponed. And uh Ms. Abigail and Myra, we were all gonna go, and I got there the the evening before. So they had some uh festivities, so it, but in the morning, it was called due to the strikes, and uh uh no one would walk across the pick and light. Solidarity, Dolores Huerto is going to be one of our speakers, so it was postponed. And Dr. Thurman, too, um just declined to come, but we have hope. Um the other thing I wanted to share is, mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay. Yes, there was one more thing I had failed to mention, I had gone by to to say hello to Vermont Principal, who was on my way home one day. And Mr. Hernandez, is that his name? Oh, just a wonderful, wonderful man, and he showed me all the little things that, you know, he he wants to do. He's a, can tell he's a handyman at heart, because he pointed out the soft spots on the wall where the water is coming in, and so. Uh one of the things that he was really concerned with, and he pointed out to me, he says that he would like to see the 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 plastic blue cover over the chain link fence along the front of the school. He fears the slow-driving cars that come in front of the kinder class uh in the beginning in the morning and in the afternoon, and he he feels uneasy. And he notices that they did cover one little piece of it uh to like to hide uh some of the equipment that's in the front. And he says, oh, the children are more important than equipment, they should have just went ahead and extended it all the way through. And I told him, I said, well, can you put in a work order? And he goes, I suppose I could, you know, I just, I gave him that. But I just was interested in following up to see if he if he had that uh ever put in a work order and that was done for him. And he was also worried about how hot the uh doors would get during the summer, when they went, the children and the parents would go to push open the the big heavy metal uh doors, and they were like burning. So you have to go and get some kind of towel or pot holders or something, to push open the door, it's hard. Anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
Ms. Grande, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yes, no, so I I just wanted to say, I I think it's great that the students get to hear, um student board members get to hear from the board uh from each of one of us, because we have different areas that we focus on and that we pay attention more to others. And so just to hear our different perspective on how we really look at the agenda, I think that was great. I know they didn't have too many questions, but for the most part, at least it walks them through how, you know, I review the agenda. So I think that would be great for um for those of us who hasn't yet done it, and then just to sign up. So I'll I'll try to sign up for additional ones. Um I also want to, and I'll probably pose this at the next board meeting, is um look at a resolution pertaining to the language that the city passed. I know Terry Komenic uh had given me a copy of it and said that it was on the Friday update two weeks ago with regards to the airport uh and um the letter that was sent on the district's behalf indicating, you know, um their reconsideration. And so I would like to look at that language and maybe create a a resolution for the school district. Today's not gonna be fully asked, my full ask, but I will um ask it at the next board meeting um that um hopefully I can get the support from the board members, only because we have sent a letter in in ensuring that um the air- airport um coalition or the community um really look at how they're displacing the families and the students that are part of our school district that lives in those areas um near Indian Springs High School.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina, Ms. Alexander?
Thank you. Um would like to first say happy Principal Month. I know we did a resolution for administrators, but I wanted to make sure we acknowledge our our principals as well. Um I know they're administrators, but just want to give them their shout-out. Um also, it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I'm not sure if it's on our horizon, but I'd like to suggest that we do um some type of resolution regarding breast cancer awareness. We have a number of um staff members that are survivors or we've had family members. Um I know Dr. Hill did pass away from breast cancer, so I think it would be nice if we could do that. Um and then for me, I attended a human trafficking task force, um it's being put together um by, I'm not sure if we've all received the invitation, but I did attend it. Um it's being put together by um Daphne Hawkins. And it, at the event, or at the task force, it's pretty well-represented. So we have case that's there, um the city is in attendance, superintendent's and, not superintendent, but the supervisor is in attendance. And it would be nice if we um somehow um think about our approach to how we want to support the task force. I don't know what we can or cannot do. Um but definitely, it's an it's an area that plagues our community um and is an opportunity to collaborate with other organizations, nonprofits uh related to a situation that plagues our community and um particularly our youth. So I'd want to bring that up. And um I attended Mr. and Mrs. Cardinal, so um put on by Jamie Rios, it was an excellent event. Superintendent Ariano was there, um Assistant Superintendent Rodriguez, as well as Poncez, um and what other board members, I'm not sure. I know we had City Council in the House and County School Board Member, um Dr. Doughty Rogers. And it was a great event, we even had the mayor of Victorville there, so kudos to Jamie, we had Ms. California as well. We had all these wonderful, like beautiful women walking around. And and they received recognition in all their different cities, so I applaud him for his network and then what he does for our youth, it was a great event. Um then I also attended the Black Honor Roll, as well as Island Pacific Honor Roll, so um thank you, Mrs. Applegate, for your leadership, um definitely a testimony to what you instill in your leaders. Um the Black Honor Roll, I know that's been around for, was it nine, the ninth year? And then for um Pacific Islander, it was the first year, and what an amazing event, just the culture that was um shared. Dancers, the speakers, and the kids, or the our scholars, uh it's just very impressive. It was a funny event, I had a good day, it was tiring, but it was fun. And then um just closing out on the one issue related to um safety, I'm not sure what we are, what parents are being told, or anybody that's being interested in coming to the school board, but this, the lady that spoke to us, that was the crossing guard, she had signatures, I don't know if she shared that, but she said that she had to have a number of signatures to come to the school board meeting to express her concern. So I I just think that maybe if we um just educate anyone who has a concern that, you know, you come, you express yourself, you state what the problem is. I don't know if they necessarily need to have a petition with signatures to to validate the concern. And I was a little concerned about that, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander, and I'll keep mine very brief, just uh really nice to see our our students this uh this evening, our mariachi and folklorico programs. As we said, we were hoping for that, I I want to also give, you know, kudos where kudos are due, and even though she's not here, I know Dr. Flores was a a huge person who supported that program and getting up and running, so. Dr. Flores, if you're out there watching, thank you as well for making that happen, and uh all of us is, uh keep it going, as Vice President Tillman said. I definitely want to see them in their nice outfits, you know, and and we have the money, and we're gonna invest into that program like we do with so many other programs. Uh thank you to the A.D.s and the rest of the coaches that came out today, Dr. Rodriguez as well, for the Athletic Strategic Plan, uh moving forward with that, super excited about it, I noticed some big money, uh big-ticket items on there that we're gonna need to, you know, seek funding for, such as our middle school gyms. It's not gonna be able to get done on its own, so we're gonna have to, you know, look at some other options, hopefully down the road, we'll talk about that. Uh again, thank you to Bank of America for coming today and uh doing a surprise presentation to the Making Hope Happen Foundation. Two hundred thousand dollar check, I think that's really nice, I think we got Ms. Detman uh got her on that one, the executive director, so. If you're out there, yeah, I'm glad we were able to surprise you and and the foundation as well, and uh thank you to Bank of America, and I'm gonna keep it at that. Um Ms. Rosenbloom, thank you for staying with us late this evening uh and hanging out with us, so we appreciate you.
Appreciate you, I always got you, you guys.
Alright, alright, may maybe you could do a little homework while you're over there, while we check on you. Got a lot of good tutors up here, so. Alright, folks, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Superintendent Ariano.
Thank you, President Wyatt, just a just a few celebrations to share today. First of all, congratulations to our wonderful district, and in particular to uh Dr. Rodriguez and Marlene Bykandova and her team. We have once again earned the prestigious Golden Bell Award for our Bullying Intervention System undercover team. And uh obviously, we still have a lot of work to do, but coming from a different district and coming here, we have a lot in place and a lot that we are building, so uh congratulations to our outstanding team. We will be recognized at the CSBA Conference coming up in San Francisco in November, so that's uh very exciting. I also want to offer and and congratulate uh Board President Danny Tillman, who uh this weekend will be honored at the One Hundred Black Men of the Ill and Empire Gala. So I'll be excited to be there, along with a few of our colleagues to cheer on uh uh Mr. Tillman, so that's gonna be very exciting, man.
Thank you very much.
I get to wear tux, man, Danny and I were in tuxes, I'm gonna get a picture of Danny and I in tux, that's gonna look good, that's gonna look good. Uh I want to alert and inform our community that uh tomorrow, there will be a national um emergency alert test done by FEMA. So right about eleven twenty AM, our, anybody who has a cell phone, you will receive a text alert. So I know Eric Vati- So I know Eric Vatier and Marion have sent out information to our staff, to our parents, and to our teachers so that they're aware in case a cell phone start ringing off the hook tomorrow at about 11:20 that we know it's something that's legitimate. So Marion, thank you for sending out some information so everyone is aware. Had a great, busy two weeks since the last time we were together. Since we were together, I've been able to visit Hunt Elementary, North Park, Lidle Creek, Lincoln, Richardson Prep High, and Pacuma K-8 School. Great visits. Able to attend the Del Valle ribbon-cutting for Animatronic Lab at Del Valle, which is wonderful. Attended, Danny Tillman and I attended the Shannon Hills First Annual Hispanic Heritage Celebration. That was a good time. Went to the Mr. and Mrs. Cardinal Pageant over at Indian Springs High School, and that was a lovely event put on by, by Jamie. What a great job. I attended the State of Samaria County Event at Ontario Convention Center and got to hear all of the great things that are happening in the county of San Bernardino to help our community and help our people. So a lot of great things are going to be happening that are going to affect us directly as a community. Mickey, thanks for getting us involved in the 12th Annual LEED Summit at CSUSB. What a great event. We had Dolores Huerta, a national treasure, speaking and talking a little bit about her history. We had Emilio Rivera, the actor, talking about his personal life and journey. It was just amazing, his life turnaround. And I agree, he would be a great person to come and, and speak to some of our students. James Ramos talking about a lot of the initiatives for our Native American folks here in the state of California, a lot of the injustices that we're trying to make right. So I learned a lot from him. And just, I want to applaud Dr. Enrique Maria for his passion in trying to have difficult conversations in our community that bring us together and make us better. Want to thank Dr. Kelly and the Inland Child Development Center. I had the opportunity with Dr. Rodriguez to attend their open house yesterday at the Adult Ed. And what a wonderful space that is for preschool daycare for our kids. Just a wonderful event. So I want to thank you. And also just want, another shout-out to Dr. Greer, Francine Brashir, Anna Applegate, and everybody involved. The Black Honor Roll and the Pacific Honor, Honor Roll event was just great, and I loved getting everybody singing Ain't No Stoppin' Us Now at the first event. That was a lot of fun. But it's great to recognize all of our scholars and make sure that we celebrate the diversity within our community because that's what makes us beautiful, is that diversity. And our kids were seen, heard, valued, and loved, and so were our parents. So those are two great events. And I'll end tonight, but just thanking everyone who was involved in submitting thought exchange feedback. So Marion, thank you, and Katrin, thank you for all the work that you did in organizing that thought exchange. We are now collecting all the analyticals, the themes that came out, but I want to share with you how much involvement we had. So the superintendent forums that we had, the four folks, our four meetings were nice, maybe combined, maybe 100 people, 120 people, Warm Bodies. Thought exchange, the adult thought exchange, we had over 1,000 people participate and submit 1,200 different thoughts of what the Board of Education and Superintendent should consider as part of our multi-year vision. Remember, we had our high school students involved? 3,800 of our high school students participated and entered 3,500 thoughts for the Board of Education and Superintendent to consider about what they want to see this district look like between now and 2030. So I just want to thank the community, our staff, our students, the English teachers at the high school that carved out that time for the kids to do thought exchange. That feedback is going to be so valuable as we start to carve out what our multi-year vision is for the district. So as I always say, it's been a great couple of weeks in the Samaria City Unified School District. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Ariano. Always appreciate your comments and definitely all your celebrations. And move on to 11.1, Review of Requests. Ms. Bountag.
Student Board Member Daisy requesting information on board policies or administrative regulations regarding high school student interns working in paid internships in after-school programs, or whether the discontinuation has any relation to insufficient funding. Ms. Chahusky hopes that we can figure out some way to support the community around Fairfax Elementary School during the road bridge project. Ms. Chahusky is hoping we can look for multiple ways to support the anti-bullying program. And Ms. Chahusky is requesting that Emilio Rivera come and talk to students about anti-gun violence. Ms. Grande requested to follow up with Vermont Principal's request for a cover over the chain link fence. And Ms. Alexander is requesting how we can support the task force for human trafficking. There is one request from Ms. Rosales Medina, and we're going to follow up with, it's regarding language and creating a resolution.
Mr., yeah, Mr. Koenig knows with what I'm referring to. It's the, the airport, yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Chahusky, did you have a comment?
It wasn't around gun violence. I want him to talk to our students who have been drug or alcohol involved or are not succeeding in school, like our students with, you know, multiple Fs. Because of, he was so able to turn his life around and the way he spoke about it, I think he could be inspiring and another tool for us to reach some of our students who are, have disconnected themselves from our schools.
Move to adjourn?
Moved.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Rosales Medina. I'm sure we're all in favor. Aye, and meeting adjourned. Have a great evening and drive home safe and be careful.